Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Milford Board of Selectment. It's a regularly scheduled meeting and it's April 27, 2015. Oh, first thing we have is a phone call. So, we're gonna kill that. Hopefully, it's not from one of my kids, but it probably is. Second item on the agenda. We've got the signing of the warrant.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Will. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have two meeting minutes to approve, April 13 and April 16. Unless there's any request for changes, I'll entertain a motion on both.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'm just looking because I'd have to abstain from the... Either one of these are executive, right? They're both regular, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, they're correct.
Yep, no, I'll second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? That too is unanimous. The next item that we have is invitation to speak. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the board? Sandy?
I'd like to address the board. And we, of course, had two sink holes in our yard with... because of the collapsing walls. All right, we've been very patient with that and have had a big metal plate in our backyard for about five years now. We were just made aware, and I'm all for improving this structure because it goes underneath land. And I think you... I think you're aware of... Have you seen this, Will?
Not your property specific.
Okay, it goes from...
I'm aware of it, Sandy. I drive by it every day, more than once.
I used to walk under it when I'm in pit. But it goes underneath our property. And I've just recently been made aware that this... I was talking to an engineer at the waterways because I'm concerned that they're diverting this, they're changing the brook of the culvert, and they're digging a new culvert to go in there. And I'm concerned about that, for one thing. But I've just been made aware that they're widening this by... they're doubling, by double, which is taking away the use of our land. And they're actually redirecting it, this culvert, to go along the property line where we have a big row of beautiful evergreens. We're not going to be able to plant these or have a natural border on our property anymore. And nobody has... not one person has come to discuss this with us. It's gonna have a traumatic effect on our property. And it's a big expense if they left it where it is, and they wouldn't have to be digging this culvert, thus, you know, a significant expense as well to the town. But it's affecting our property. This is our home. We've had it for 51 years. And no one's bothering to actually sit down and explain to us that maybe there's another alternative that won't be so traumatic to our property.
Okay.
The aesthetics of the property is gonna be unbelievable. It's gonna lower the value. And as far as, I think there's... I heard Vani Reese say at one point, there's going to be only four feet of dirt on top of this culvert. So, we're not gonna be able to plant anything here.
Okay, so, let me just stop you right there. I see some other folks, and I know you're from the area. Are you all here to discuss the Godfrey Brook?
We're all affected by the...
Okay, all right, so, why don't we do this? Because we're gonna have a presentation, and I don't think it makes sense for us to try to talk about it before the presentation. So, if I could ask you to step back, and then we'll just go forward on our agenda. And then, after we have the presentation on that, after my colleagues get a chance to ask questions about it, then I'll be glad to open it up to you to ask some questions. But at least then you'll have the benefit of the presentation in full from the town engineer and the highway surveyor. You'll hear whatever points the board has, and then I'll be glad to allow you to ask whatever questions.
Okay. I just want to show that I'd be able to speak after.
Oh, Sandy, I don't think we could stop you from speaking, even if we wanted to. Okay? So, I think that makes the most sense, you know, because I don't want to try to speculate on things, not when we're gonna have a very comprehensive presentation.
No, I understand. I just thought this was my only opportunity, so I had to take it.
No, we're gonna... We're gonna give you a little reservation.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the board on any other items not on the agenda? Okay, if not, then I want to move on with the scheduled agenda. And the next item that we have is with the treasurer. And I see that the finance director is here also, and this is regarding a bonding issue for Woodland School and Countryside. So, Kelly, Zach?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
Good. So, we have your correspondence, April 24. We have the summary for Moody's. So, with that, I'll turn it over.
Okay, I'm gonna be seeking two separate votes this evening. One for each of the borrowings that we took bids on on April 22. One of them is a 30-year, $6.2 million bond for the Geriatric Authority. That was after the bids on the 22nd. went to Fidelity Capital Markets with a total interest cost of 3.44 percent.
3.4.
Yeah. And Moody's Investor Service reaffirmed the town's AA2 rating, which we were pleased with. And the second is the Woodland School project. We're looking for a short-term, one-year bond anticipation note. That came in with a grade of MiG-1, which is municipal investment grade one, which is great. And that had a net interest cost of .2689 after they included a $73,000 premium worth at. And just looking for approval of the board to accept this and unfortunately sign a way. There's a lot of signatures needed, and...
Yes, we've heard about that.
Yes, I know. I apologize in advance. And that's it. If you have any questions?
Okay, before I turn it over to the board, Zach, is there anything you'd like to add to it?
Yeah, I just want to kind of address where we are with these projects right now, just so you guys know what to expect for upcoming, short-term and long-term. So, Geriatric right now is very much on pace with being able to wrap up this project by the end of the calendar year. They're also within budget of the 6.2, which is why we moved forward with doing the full 6.2. So, that's coming down the line. Again, this will be fully bonding them. They'll be able to wrap up the project, and we'll be able to move forward. We've already addressed debt payments in the FY '16 budget, so we'll be on top of that, and we're in good shape there. As far as the Woodland School project, right now, we're asking to borrow 6 million, and that's just to make sure we don't end up with a deficit once we get to 630, so we're not affected by our free cash calculation, which it shouldn't be. And also, keep in mind, we're getting steady reimbursements back to the town. And the person assigned to do that is Kathy Perry, the school business manager. So, as we're expending, she's actually putting them in and receiving reimbursements for around 3 million at this point. Just a heads up, once we get into FY '16, starting right away, this project's gonna really kick off, and we will be expending a lot of money every month right through. I'm talking three to four million dollars a month. So, I'll go back to originally saying, at this point, we're borrowing six for short-term. We will not be able to handle a cash flow like that, so we will be coming back probably around September to borrow again. But our logic right now is, why pay interest when we don't have to? So, that is the game plan. And also, we'll be on top of having reimbursement submitted timely. That way, it does help with our cash flow. So, that's where we're at right now. And again, can't stress enough, we need them signatures tonight to move forward.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. And not to alarm anyone, when you talk about that cash flow in terms of that kind of a number for Woodland, that's clearly been anticipated and taken into consideration and worked within the budgetary plan.
Absolutely.
Okay, so with that, let me turn it over to my colleagues. Bill?
No, I... This is pretty clear, and I understand and I appreciate the presentation that you just gave to provide additional detail. When I look at the Moody's Investor Service and the highlights, just on the summaries, it talks about Milford's long-term credit strength and healthy liquidity, and the notes and debt representing moderate risk. I don't think, too, an investment house is anything called zero risk, so I expect to see moderate for any type of significant borrowing. I don't have any questions beyond what you've already provided. You've already answered my questions and what you had to say tonight, so I'm good.
Thank you. Will?
I'm all set, too. Thank you both.
Yeah, let me just, you know, commend both of you and your staff for the work that you did on this and the work that you will continue to do. It's not easy, but you make it look that way, so I just want to step back a little bit to commend you for the work that you've done. And to the press, you know, I would ask that you take special notice of the Moody's Investor Service attachment to it. You know, I always enjoy looking at this when these bonds become due because, you know, I find it, you know, fairly extensive. It's an independent set of eyes and ears on what we're doing in Milford, and, you know, to me, it's very, very encouraging. And I think I can sum it up just on one sentence that I picked out on page three, under management and governance. "The town's management team has shown a long-term trend of consistent and conservative fiscal management with multi-year capital planning and budgeting." And, you know, from that cooperative effort with everyone, we're now reaping the benefits of this kind of an interest rate. So, great job. And with that, let me entertain the motions that we are going to need. And I will turn to my left.
I have those written down. The only other thing I forgot is that it... within the Moody's report, it talks about our debt service remaining manageable at 3.6 percent overall, so...
Yeah, if you want to add some more, go ahead.
No, no, I'm happy to present a motion as written. Each of you have one provided to you. A vote that the sale of the $6.2 million general obligation Geriatric Authority bonds of the town dated May 1, 2015, the bonds to Fidelity Capital Markets, Division of National Financial Services LLC, at par accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable May 1 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as presented, so within the form that we were given.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that particular motion? If not, all those in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Second motion?
The second motion is to approve the sale of $6 million general obligation bond anticipation notes. The notes of the town dated May 15, 2015, payable May 13, 2016, to Eastern Bank, at par accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $73,455.63.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? That too is unanimous. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Okay, before I get to the next item on the agenda, I am going to jump around a little bit. Are the representatives from Applebee's here? Why don't you folks come on down? Because I anticipate your item to be relatively quick, and the one after that, not so. So, it's not that we don't like having you guys hang around, but I'm sure you don't want to hang around. Okay, so, we have... What do we have? We have a petition for a change of license. The licensee, Apple New England LLC, is petitioning for a change of manager. The last approved manager was Michael Joseph Zabo. The requested new manager is Timothy Joseph McCarron. So, gentlemen, let me just turn it over and...
Okay, we're just looking to change manager. I just recently took over the restaurant, so we're looking for approval to make myself on the liquor license.
Okay, great. Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, the... as customary, we receive input from the building commissioner. It's allowable use, no change of use, no outstanding taxes, no concerns from the various department heads. So, the only question I would have is, how long have you been with Applebee's?
A little over three years. I've been in the restaurant business for 25, 30 years.
Okay.
I've been with Applebee's three years. Before that, I was with Uno's, and I've worked for Bertucci's for 10 years.
And have you had the opportunity to work within the Milford branch and Milford store?
I have been in this store for two years.
Two years, okay.
Yes.
Have you had the opportunity to meet with the police chief at all?
I haven't met the police chief, no.
So, my advice would be similar to what we've said in the past, that as the new manager and representative on the license that you meet with the police chief, make sure you're synced up on the guidance and information that they're looking for.
Okay.
So, expectations are set should any events occur...
Okay.
...associated with liquor license. But other than that, I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Will?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sure.
Yeah, get with the chief as soon as you can.
I will.
Okay.
Okay, let's skip back to the regularly scheduled 7:15 appointment, and that is with town engineer Vani Reese, highway surveyor Scott Crisafulli, to get the presentation on the proposed Godfrey Brook repair and the upcoming town meeting article. Vani, the show is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having us back to talk about Godfrey Brook again. And I'd like to just make a clarification here. The purpose of this presentation was to talk about the financial alternatives for Godfrey Brook, and I understand the concerns of the residents, and I have met with these residents in the past and am willing to do so again in the future. So, we can certainly talk about how the design evolved, but the purpose of this specific PowerPoint was to discuss the dollars and cents and the way that the town hopes to finance this.
Sure.
So, this is... this is a picture of Godfrey Brook just downstream of Main Street. You can see it's... this is actually a better part of the brook. It's got solid concrete walls instead of rubble block walls, but you can see where the walls are bowing in. The sides of the brook and several places are caving in, just like they are in Sandra's yard. The portion of the brook through Sandra's yard is underground, which makes it even more of a danger, really, because people don't know that there's a culvert underneath, and it's creating a sinkhole. So, we feel very strongly about getting that fixed as soon as possible. This project was designed and bid, and so our low bidder came in at $2.72 million. So, that's a bid that we have in hand, and they are holding their bids for us until after town meeting so that we can appropriate the money and then award it. As soon as the award is made, the contractor plans to start work right away. With a contingency of 10 percent and construction services costs, we're estimating right now that the total cost of the project will be about $2.6 million. Just to remind everyone, we have two FEMA grants. They are specific to each part of the project. So, Main Street is $392, and Congress Terrace is $404,000. These two grants were given to us by FEMA. They had... they do expire. They must be expended by March 2017, which, if we do start construction in summer, we should have no problem meeting that deadline. And also, the... some of the conditions of getting these grants drove some of the design aspects of the project, which we can talk about a little bit later. This is an overview of where the projects are. So, it's actually two separate projects. Congress Terrace is one section. We start at Congress Terrace where the brook crosses. We go underground to Westbrook Street and then the rest of the way to West Walnut Street. And that portion of the brook will be repaired, and there is also some additional utility work involved. Main Street, we will start just upstream of where the brook crosses Main Street, just below the... where Hospital Brook and Godfrey Brook converge, and we'll go to just downstream of Main Street. So, that's a little bit of a shorter section, but it is a little more complicated just because of all the utilities and the Main Street itself. So, I'll talk about Main Street first. Main Street is an existing two-culvert section going from the confluence of Hospital Brook and Godfrey Brook to below Main Street. The existing culverts are six by three by 195 feet. We're proposing to replace them with two culverts nine by four by 235 feet. We are upsizing the culverts because the existing culvert condition cannot handle anything more than a 10-year storm. So, anything over a 10-year storm, the brook overtops and causes flooding in the downtown area. So, we are increasing the size of the culverts so that they can handle the 25-year storm. We're also increasing the length of the culvert on the Main Street section by 40 extra feet because we go through the yard at 340 Main Street, and we are actually going to be putting the culvert underground, so it will increase the size of the backyard. Even though the culvert itself is larger, when it's all said and done, it will be grassed over, and they'll actually have more of a backyard than they do now. So, that was the reason for increasing it by 40 feet. We had a lot of discussions with DEP and Army Corps about that and had to make some changes based on their design guidance, but we were allowed to do that. And then you can see we have transition sections on both the upstream and downstream side. This is a plan view of Congress Terrace, so we are starting on Congress Terrace just right at where Congress Terrace crosses the brook. We're going... This portion of the culvert is all underground, and that's kind of a significant point. So, while we are going through these yards, again, when it is all done, it'll all be covered up, and it'll be underground, and the yard will be restored. And then this is the section from Westbrook Street down to West Walnut Street. So, the existing stone culvert at Congress Terrace is six by four by 240 feet. We are making it wider. It's going to be 10 by three by 240 feet. It is being widened again so that we can meet that 25-year storm. Congress Terrace doesn't even handle a 10-year storm at this point, and so there are significant issues with flooding and backing up of the brook because of that. We are also replacing 356 linear feet of sewer pipe... I'm sorry, 400 linear feet of sewer pipe and 356 linear feet of the culvert itself between Westbrook Street and West Walnut Street. Other key points to keep in mind for this funding discussion is that this project is now fully permitted, so it has gone through MAST DEP, EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, and the Milford Conservation Commission. We have a 401 water quality certification. We have an Army Corps 404 certification. So, everything is in place for the contractor to start this work. We've also talked extensively with all of the property owners along the brook. We have right-of入for 16 properties along the brook. And then we have three properties that are associated with the Main Street portion where we are going to actually have to do eminent domain takings because they will not give us a right-of entry. All the other properties along the brook, both Congress Terrace and Main Street, have given us permission to come onto their property and do this work. So, in terms of funding, we have two alternatives. To go after the project as one big whole project or to split it up as... into two smaller projects. And this is exactly what I had proposed to the finance committee as well. So, the... if we go for the larger project, we would have to appropriate the full $2.6 million at town meeting. We would receive reimbursement from FEMA for the $800,000. The way that would work is as... it's a reimbursement account, so as the bills from the contractor came in, we would pay them, then we would submit a copy of the invoice to FEMA. We would get 75 percent of that money back. So, it would be a rolling reimbursement. The overall project cost to the town would be about $1.8 million. This is a shot. This is a picture of the brook just upstream of Main Street, and you can see that the wall of the brook is actually the foundation of this building. So, we've got, in addition to Sandy's property, we've got a couple of places where there are some real tricky issues that we have to deal with to make this work and to protect private property. The advantages of doing the larger property are obviously economy of scale. We have a bid price in hand. We know what it's gonna cost, and the entire project could be completed by mid-2016, and even with any type of delay, definitely by the 2017 deadline. The second alternative would be to just rebid the Congress Terrace portion. Again, we feel, from a public safety standpoint, that this one is the most critical. It's approximately half of the cost of the entire project. Based on the bids that we received, we broke them out item by item, and we estimate that it was probably about a little over a million dollars for the Congress Terrace portion. The range of the bids, however, was close to 25 percent, so we would, for budgeting purposes, if we decided to go with this alternative, we would recommend a 25 percent contingency. There would be a decrease to construction services because we'd be doing less. So, the total estimate for the... just the Congress Terrace part would be $1.3 million. The amount of the FEMA reimbursement would only be 404,000, not 800,000 because the two grants are very specific to the two locations. So, after the FEMA reimbursement, we would be looking at $906,000 to do Congress Terrace. This is a picture of Congress Terrace upstream where the brook has already been repaired, so you can see the, you know, the stark difference between that picture and that picture, just the condition of the brook. The alternative to the two advantages, or to advantage number two, I'm sorry, is it's a lower cost to the town now, but there are many disadvantages. It does not address the Main Street portion. It may result in losing the Main Street FEMA grant. It may require new permitting, and rebidding could result in higher prices. We never know what we're gonna get when we put something back up to bid. And it would probably make us compress the construction schedule more also if we were still trying to meet that 2017 deadline. And this is the portion of the brook just downstream of Main Street, actually, where we're gonna be putting it underground. And you can see, you know, this is not usable yard for anybody. It'll be much better once this is all underground and we get rid of these collapsing walls. So, I'd like to open it up for any kind of discussion at this point.
Okay. Scott, I know you're here before we turn it over to the board. Is there anything you want to add to it at this point?
Yeah. You know, both projects are pretty important. The Main Street culvert is... I mean, you know, it's gonna go, and when it goes, we're gonna have a huge problem. It's Main Street. We will have to close the road down. So, that's important in that way. And obviously, the other one, the ground is caving in, it's in somebody's backyard, and those culverts have been repaired numerous times. And, you know, it's the same problem. They're gonna go. You know, the alternative, you know, taking a chance, it's a gamble, you know? In the future, if we, you know, if we did it that way, we could probably resubmit all this and try to get another grant, but we don't know when that could happen. We have the money now, so I, you know, it's... I think it's the thing to do, not take any chances, especially with Main Street.
Sure, sure, yeah, okay. Let me turn it to the board. Let me turn it to the board for questions, comments. Bill?
Just a couple of questions. What, you know, this makes sense. So for the 10 years I've been on the board, Vaunee, we've been talking about the risk that these Brookes presented to the businesses and the residents of Milford, especially those along the Brook, those are getting collapsed. I think it was 2005, 2006, back-to-back heavy rain events. Both of them called once-in-a-hundred-year storms, if you can imagine, back-to-back years, that caused a great deal of damage. So we've been talking about this for a long time. I'm glad we've gotten to this point. But I did want to ask a couple of questions. So if I look at this, I see concrete. That wasn't from the WPA years, but that was subsequent restoration of some portion of the Brook. Because I know some of it's stone and some of it's from, you know, the '30s. And then we've got...
You know, I don't know, I don't have a time when that was done.
Yeah.
It was long before me, so it could have been 20, 30 years ago. I don't even know.
I do not know when that was done either. There is a date on the bridge itself, and I thought it was from the '30s. But this is, yeah, these stone walls, these concrete walls are actually better than the concrete rubble and stone walls that are on other portions of the Brook.
Whatever was done to that particular section was obviously not done right. It should not be toppling over like it is. It's leaning worse than...
Yeah, you can see the...
You can see it a little bit there, but that's really leaning if you go look at it.
The roots and the soil pressure are pushing...
That shouldn't be happening.
Pushing it in from the top.
If you could go back to the first page of your presentation, there's something similar there.
The first, very first one?
Very first.
Yep, that's actually also near Main Street.
So there we have a very bowed concrete wall. And what I notice is there's very large trees next to it. And here lies my concern. You know, you can see trees to the left and trees to the right. And we talk about vegetation. I know the FinCom asked the question, but I want to get a little more clarity on it. What's our maintenance plan such that we don't have the same situation in earlier failures, 20-year failures, 15-year failures for the vegetation that you mentioned, the trees and whatnot, and the root systems growing into these? Because I'd hate to make this type of investment. And I know we're talking about people's property, so I want to be mindful of that at the same time. Because that tree to the left and that tree to the right obviously wouldn't be able to stay there and still have a good functioning culvert system that's not getting pushed in. So I worry about our ongoing ability to maintain it.
Well, just one question. This particular piece is not going to be done, is it?
Yes.
Yes. And this particular piece actually is one of the places where we're doing a taking. So the town will own this, and the property owner will not be able to plant new trees there. Those trees are coming out. Now, in other places where we're not doing a taking, the property owners will be able to replant. But depending on where that is, in most places, the depth of the culvert is a good four feet down, so the tree is not, and the culvert's underground, so the tree is not...
Yeah, I'm thinking about where it's open.
Yeah. Through this section, we actually will own the Brook finally through this section so we can control. And it will probably fall to the Highway Department to take care of the nuisance vegetation.
On town-owned sections, but I'm not sure about private, you know, pots of this Brook. So we have the right to go on that property and cut brush?
You don't.
Right.
Unless you get permission.
Right.
Absolutely.
So if the homeowner here granted us right of entry, would we still be doing the taking?
No, we would not be doing a taking.
So it's only by good fortune that they've not allowed us right of entry that we'll own it and we'll clear this vegetation?
Well, from that perspective, yes.
I just wanted to understand where we're going with that.
I mean, at some point, it does...
We would be in the same situation. If the homeowner grants us right of entry, we would be in the exact same situation in that culvert area there with the vegetation and the trees.
Well, that section's going to be covered. That's going to be grassed.
Okay.
So not that...
But also, at some point, it becomes a public safety issue. And no homeowner has a right to do anything to the portion of the Brook that serves the public and that is owned by the town.
Yeah, I'm sure a lawyer, a lot of lawyers would have a great deal to say about that. Just guessing.
Our current maintenance is, anything 10 feet from the road or 10 feet from the culvert, we go in and cut. Just so we're not blocking culverts. Years ago, they used to go all the way up the rivers and cut everything. I just, that's just not, actually Conservation doesn't want us doing that, so we don't do it anymore. But always 10 feet within a culvert is what we maintain. I mean, I'm looking at this now, and there's that tree on the left there. I mean, that tree's old, and that wall is right underneath it. So that tree wasn't there when they put that wall in. So I'm thinking those walls, I mean...
Or it was much smaller.
Yeah, well, it probably wasn't there at all. It wouldn't have been able to be there when they put the wall in. But it's probably, I mean, that wall's got to be 50, 60 years old, not more. So this side with the tree is actually okay. It's the other side with just a little brush that's falling over. It's not the trees that are causing that, that's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, it's not the vegetation?
Not in that particular spot. The rest of the Brook with all the stone walls, it is the trees. They're pushing the rocks out.
Okay, yeah.
And that's a different problem.
That I've seen. And, you know, for many people that have been on the FinCom for years, we've toured a lot of the sites, the various sites over the years. I know I go back 10 years again, you know, toured some of these. So beyond the pictures that you're showing, we've actually physically walked the Brook and seen it. No, this has been something that's been on my radar for a very long time. I know, Scott, it's been on yours. Vaunee, you're relatively new. This is something that we need to do to protect people's property. I can only imagine if we have a couple more storms like we had in '05 and '06, what can happen, especially when we look at... I know there are a lot of different places where the Brook is right on top of the house. So we're talking about people's residence in a lot of cases and not necessarily just somebody's backyard. I don't mean to minimize the loss of somebody's backyard, but most certainly their home where their children live.
Take that picture for a second. I want to show them something.
Oh, the one I just showed?
This one here?
Well, this one, this one shows where it's right at the house.
That's amazing.
You know, that's the foundation of this building.
And we had to move that garage off of West Street.
Yeah, we moved the garage.
I remember that.
I just want to show them something.
Back to the first one?
If you look, let me see right here. This is a pillar in the middle of the culvert.
Right.
There's nothing underneath it. It's hollow. See the black underneath it? There's nothing there holding it up. It's washed out. So there's nothing holding that culvert up. And that's the reality of it.
And what, what part of the road is that? That's Main Street?
This would be...
It's the other...
South side of Main Street.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
That's, to the right of that would be replacement auto pads.
And it was, I'm sorry, Scott, just to test your memory for a second. It's good to have this institutional memory here. We had to close, we had to close Westbrook Street. And how long did that, was that closed because of a similar...
Six months or so. Was it 10 months?
10 months.
Somebody lives there and knows very...
Yeah, no, that was a different thing. That was an actual washout during a storm, which FEMA paid to fix. It took a little time to get all that going. That wasn't a grant or anything.
But we know...
And that was a Band-Aid. That's all that was.
I guess my point is, we know how disruptive it can be when we start. We think about, so for those folks who aren't on Westbrook Street all the time, we think about it as, you look at it on a map and it's just a small little street, and it's not really that disruptive to the community. Talk to the folks who live around it, see how disruptive it is when that gets closed. I know you got the calls, I got calls as well.
Yeah.
It's largely impactful to the community and its residents that are in that neighborhood.
Put that into perspective of Main Street if we had a problem there.
Right. And we talk about emergency services, so I know you're not trying to justify a project. You're trying to give us different alternate financing schemes. But I did want to go back, take a little walk down history, you know, memory lane here. Many of these Brookes were built in the '30s. We need to do something. Now we're trying to work with the homeowners, and I'm especially interested in hearing more about what the homeowners here have to say. But I appreciate, I know you and I had talked, and this is why we had asked you to come here. You and I had talked, and at one point you were still on the fence about which financing proposal to use. Now you're clear and definitive about do it all at once. Can you walk me through what got you from A to B?
I just, I'm just worried what's going to happen with the culverts. And if we don't get the Main Street one done, we don't know how much life that has left of it.
Right.
Like, could be next week. We just don't know.
Right.
I'd like to say, you know, all that 10 years, but I would, you know, never do that. Because I don't know. Like I said, if you look at it, that is definitely hanging there. There's nothing holding that up.
Okay.
You know, and that, to me, is a scary situation. If it can be done, it needs to be done now.
You mean if it can be done financially?
Financially, it needs to be done now, right?
All right. Do you want to get to as fast as we can put the money, appropriate money?
And you know something? FEMA's been good with us with these grants, and I hate to lose one and, you know, have to get another one in the future. And they look back and say, well, he didn't take this one, you know? I mean, all that plays into it, you know? So definitely going to be trying to get more grants as much as we can, you know, as often as possible.
No, it's a constant. Great work getting the grants and some of the grants we've got here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Will?
Yeah, thank you. Vaunee, two things. First, or Scott, from the financial standpoint, I know they're still trying to get some money through the environmental bond bill, which obviously would only help take away what we have to pay from that 1.8. If we got any money this fiscal year, is there any way that that could be spent prior to July 1st? Because they've done that in the past, not specifically, obviously, for this project. But there are things being talked about like that. So I think, first of all, you guys need to be prepared for that because that would really be bad if all of a sudden this administration says, "Give this to Milford," whether it's between 250,000 or a million, depending. I know usually in environmental bond bill, they don't give less than 250,000. I might be wrong, but that's usually...
Only for shovel-ready projects, obviously, too.
Right.
And this is the only one we have that's shovel-ready.
Okay. And that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure, if that's a possibility.
The air and cost could be covered at this point, but I don't know about much else, right?
Yeah, we met actually with Senator Fatman and representatives from the Office of Environmental Affairs, and they basically said that it wouldn't be available for any work that had already been done. It would only be for work going forward. So, you know, in talking with Zach and coming up with a financial plan for this, the thought was if that money does become available, then that amount that the town needs to put forward will be reduced. The FEMA matching requirement is it just can't be federal funds, so it could be state funds that we could use to match that FEMA grant.
Okay. And I'm not, you know, I certainly don't have any other knowledge. You guys were at the meeting, but I know that that has happened in years past with other communities. So I just didn't know if that came to the door. We'd be like, yeah, we can't. Obviously, if we get on next fiscal years, that obviously isn't a problem. So we're all, hopefully, we can say novena and hope that we get a little extra help with that. My second concern was obviously the neighbors. They're here, but also I'm not familiar with, you know, Sandy's, I guess, issue at this point with even the metal plate being there. But you probably will see me nosing around your house because I'm curious now just to see. But how...
Do it in daytime, though, it tells me.
Oh, yeah, I will. How have, how has the communication... How has the communication with the neighbors been at this point or throughout? Because obviously, this has been a long process. I'm new to the party. And I guess, you know, or is there a way that we can better communicate? I mean, is it one day all of a sudden bulldozers show up in their house and, you know, just...
Oh, no, that wouldn't happen.
No, that would not happen.
I know, I'm probably oversimplifying it, but...
That would not happen. This is probably the fourth presentation I've given for Godfrey Brook in the last year. And my door is always open. People have come to my office and sat down and talked to me. The issue here is we were asked to look at some alternatives so that some very nice mature trees were not lost. And we did look at alternatives, but because of how the alignment of the Brook goes and because of the slopes we had to maintain and meeting the existing and all of that, having to increase the size to the 25-year storm, we will not be able to save those trees. However, through that entire yard, the Brook will be buried four feet deep. So it, there is the potential to plant something on top of where the culvert will be after we're gone. We did talk with Sandy about, we offered her a fence in exchange for the trees. We offered to replant the trees. And that's where we left it. Now, we haven't, we, at this point, the design is not going to change. It's permitted, and we're not going back to Army Corps of Engineers and saying we moved it 10 feet to the south. But we're willing to work with her to try to come to some sort of compromise that will make her happy.
Okay, and I'm not actually, sorry, Sandy, I'm not trying to make this the, you know...
No, I want to address...
I'm not trying to embarrass Sandy or anyone else.
But she does have concerns, and I feel like she thinks that we are going to just show up with a bulldozer and she doesn't have any say, and that's not the case.
No, I just, I just use that as an example of however, however many neighbors are affected. I mean, obviously, Brian, this isn't his neighborhood.
But I'm not affected by this.
No, 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 no.
No, I don't want people to think that, oh, Jesus. I'm always getting a brand-new Brook in this back yard.
Even when I visit my friends on Caroline, we drive over it.
Okay, but I'm not really affected by it.
No, 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 no. But, I mean, you know the neighborhood.
Waterfront property.
What we typically do with a project like this and of this size is once it has been awarded and we have the contractor on board, we have a meeting with the community, with the people, with the residents who will be affected by it. And we let them know what the construction schedule will be and let them know, you know, when they should expect to see machines in their neighborhood and that type of thing. And then there will be ongoing communication...
You reach out to them. They don't come to find you. You folks will reach out to them and...
What we'll probably do is set up an evening and invite them to come and ask any questions, air any concerns that they have with the contractor while the contractor is there to make sure that he's also aware of all the concerns from the community.
Yeah, because I was just curious on ways of mitigation. Obviously, this is obviously going on for a long time. So I wasn't asking because I thought we were going to be able to change something at this point in the game. But I was just wondering from a mitigation standpoint if, you know, we're trying to do what's best with people that obviously have been dealing with quite an ordeal over the last...
In the last, what, six, seven months, it's gone from we weren't sure we were going to be able to do the project. You know, once we had it all set up financially, could we do it or not? So we're just getting back into the game now and, you know, starting to reset it up. So it has been quiet for the last six, seven months.
Yeah, and until we opened bids, we really, we had no idea if it was going to go forward at all.
So we're going to have the opportunity to sit down with you and find out what's going to happen. I know the property line, you're going to take all those trees. I was also told there was a cement retaining wall going along the backyard also.
Replacing it for that gentleman who has nothing to do with this plan. It's just that there are a lot of...
Wait a minute, timeout. We're not finished yet. So let me just cover all the bases and then I'll open it up to you, and then you direct the comments to the board, okay? Yeah, okay.
No, and I'll finish up, and I appreciate you even giving me that quick timeline, Scott, because again, I'm kind of new to the table here, so I can appreciate that. I'm all set.
All set, okay. Couple of points I want to make that I want to get the Finance Director here because, as Vaunee indicated, the purpose was really to make sure that we had the financial viability to do this project right now. Vaunee, on this particular picture, I'd just like to point out the bed of the Brook is natural, correct?
That's correct.
Right, and those walls are bowing in. They're basically on natural ground. Could you go to the other photo which shows the prefab on Congress Terrace? This is the difference, and this was explained to us by Mike Santura when it was done. Before, and Mike Santura, and Scott, you probably remember, he looked at various alternatives when talked about reconstructing this Brook. And I believe these are prefab concrete use. So that this is not on natural floor. It's basically all prefab concrete use, so you're not going to get the walls bowing in in the future.
Right, because you have that, you have that support from the bottom.
We have the support from the bottom.
You won't get the undermining, which is happening now.
You won't get the undermining. And that was something that I remember Mike kind of deliberated on for quite some time You won't get the undermining. And that, and that was something that I remember Mike kind of deliberated on for quite some time because there were a bunch of alternatives, and I know there were conservation arguments where you need the natural bed for all kinds of things to flow and that sort of thing. But ultimately, did get the okay to go forward, and the remedial work that's been done, as far as I know, has been using these things. And I think these are wonderful. They seem to work beautifully, and I think that they're going to last a very, very long time. The second thing that I want to point out is, we are only targeting two very small portions of a brook that spans a number of miles and a project that was identified, I think back in '07, to be $8 million plus. So factor in inflation from that, and, and towards Will's point, if we do get any money from the environmental bond bill, personally, I would like to see that go towards the establishment of another target area on the brook so that we can tackle this thing more efficiently and, and completely. And, and I know that, you know, since we've, we've developed that plan, the remedial work that you've done, you know, the repair work you've got in, you've tried to restore it as best you can and bring it up to that level so that that's one portion of the brook that's off that $8 million menu board, i- if you will, and, and more or less restoring it piecemeal. So, so this is not going to be the end-all, be-all for this brook, but it is targeting two very, very important and crucial intersecting spots. Okay, Zach, if you could just come on down a little bit because that was the focus of the event tonight, to see whether or not we can afford to do this project. If you want to sit down, Vaughn, you can, or whatever you want to do. You know, to me, and I know the FinCom discussed it, you know, to me, it makes sense to do it, to do it all in one fell swoop. We're going to take advantage of the FEMA grant. We know this problem's not going to get any better. We know this problem's not going to get any cheaper. So to try to do something piecemeal, I don't think makes sense, but we're going to turn it over to you to see if you've been able to really kind of push together the numbers to see if this is something we can do.
Yeah, definitely. So I spoke about two weeks ago when I was here a little bit about it, and the plan could have changed a little bit. We're going to wait for Wednesday to give FinCom the benefit of going over. But basically, again, it's 2.6 million dollars, and in order to secure the bid, we'd have to appropriate it all at this town meeting, including the 800,000 in FEMA reimbursements. So right now, we have a free cash balance of 1.4 million. However, there are a number of articles where we do need free cash in order to supplement the budget in the current year, but we cannot raise and appropriate it. So what the current plan right now is to use $1 million of our free cash, and that'll leave a balance of 1.6. Now, we can do two things at this point, and again, want to wait for Wednesday to let FinCom talk about it a little bit. As right now, I'd be recommending that there is an article to contribute to stabilization. At this point, I'd be recommending that we pass over on that, but that's a Finance Committee-sponsored article. And instead of contributing right now, we could take $500,000 that is tentatively earmarked for a stabilization contribution and put it right into this appropriation here. So the last time we talked, we did not talk about that. We talked about the possibility of maybe using stabilization. So again, that would leave 1.6, so even if we used the 500,000 that could have been a stabilization contribution, that'll still leave 1.1 million that we would have to have authorization to bond for. Now, even though we do have, we would be seeking authorization, we have zero intent of actually bonding this project. So as we get to October, at that point, hopefully, our FEMA reimbursements had come in, which would be, again, around 800,000. That'll leave 300 grand at that point to square up with, which we definitely will, will be able to do at that point. And again, as it was indicated earlier, there was a very healthy contingency. So nothing says it's even going to be 300. We could get lucky and square up with 100,000 and just be done with the project completely. Now, the, the other reason that I would be recommending that we pass over on a stabilization contribution at this point is because we also have authorization for the Milford Youth Center of 900,000. That is very much a plan to rescind as well. So just with the couple major projects coming down, waiting for October before we do a stabilization contribution, in my opinion, is the wise thing to do. So that's currently what our plan is. Again, we've had a meeting to discuss this with Town Administrator Rick Malani, with the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mark Shane, as well as our Financial Analyst, Paul Abadanza. And collectively, this is the plan that we want to move forward with.
Great, thank you. Let me turn it over to the board for questions on that. Bill?
Now, do you see, Zach, I appreciate your detail, by the way, and the organization which you showed to get to this point. Do you see that $500,000 making it to stabilization in October? Or at any point this year, or you're talking about foregoing any contribution to stabilization?
Nope, I definitely also expect a contribution. Right now, when we present the balanced budget to, to your board, to FinCom, we have 1 million earmarked, so I, I honestly think that we could do both, but again, it just might be wise to wait for October to see...
Question of timing.
Yeah, question of timing. To see, once the state budget is solid, once, uh, once we, once we know what we actually have, then that might be the better, better method. Because we have in, we have at the annual town meeting contributed to stabilization, but since I've been here, it's been out of free cash. Just told you, we have a plan for our free cash, which is why I think it's wa, it's just wise to wait for October.
I'm 100% agreement with everything you said, by the way. I just, just wanted, needed to be walked through it, but, you know, I appreciate the, the time you've taken to, to present that. And I now have a better understanding how Scott got from where he was worrying about where the funds were coming from, could we do it all, to this point here? And this just makes a great deal of sense, and it doesn't put the town at any greater risk, so.
Okay, good, thanks. Will?
No, I'm in total agreement as well. No, no need to repeat what Bill just said. Great job.
Yeah, great job. Nice, nice work, and I know they talked about a little bit the FinCom the other night, well, maybe more than a little bit. So, you know, it seems to make sense to everybody. Before I turn it over to the residents that want to talk, let me commend all three of you for excellent work on this particular project, which is extremely vexing to the town, to the residents, and also keeping in mind, this is not town-owned land. We're not legally required to do this. This is land owned by the residents, you know? Ideally, some communities, I'm sure, would not be doing this. They would leave it up to the residents. So you went over and above on everything, done a great job securing federal money to lessen the burden to the taxpayers of the town of Milford. You're going to be tackling a, a problem that is, uh, uh, very bad throughout the town, and I think you just did a great job. So, thank you for your work. So with that, let me turn it over. Sandy, you were talking before, so what would you like to address now?
Well, what I'd like to address first, there, there really was no communication. I had, I did leave several messages, by the way, Vaughn. I had to chase you down to actually get you to sit down.
Sandy, let me ask you one question.
Other than that?
Let me just ask one. I was told that there was a right of entry granted to your property.
Yes.
Okay. Who, who granted that?
We did. We signed it to let them come onto the property. That's correct.
Okay, so there must have been communication to grant the right of entry.
Well, I didn't see Vaughn at that time either.
What I'm saying, you said there was no communication. Oh, this is a total surprise, but you've also given grant, right of entry to the property, right? Okay, all right. Okay, I just want to make sure that...
That was it. There wasn't any communication about the design of the brook or what was going to be going on. My only, I, I agree. This brook has to be done.
Sure.
It absolutely has to be done. And I do appreciate all the effort that's gone into it. I would just have liked to have been able to have a discussion about what was going to go on, on my property and, because the aesthetics of the property is going to be changed forever. And we did discuss about the trees being put, but I had two arborists there. You can't plant evergreens on four feet of dirt. It's just not going to work. And I think anybody who knows anything about landscaping, it's not going to work. They'll probably live about a year and then die because they can't, the roots can't go anywhere.
So would you like the evergreens to remain and we'll leave the brook the way it is? Is that what you want?
Well, Brian.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I'm trying to get to your point.
No.
Okay.
What, this brook has been widened so that there's going to be no access to do any plantings at that part of... All we were saying is, why doesn't the brook come a little clo, come a little further into the property rather than at the border where there's nothing we can do there? That's what our concern is.
Vaughn, comment on the design of it?
The, we did look at trying to save those trees and the alignment just did not work because we have to meet existing conditions and, and because of the, the way the concrete precast culverts are made and all of that, we, we can't have a sharp angle turn in the culvert. That's just not going to work. So it was, it was an engineering issue. We, but we did look at that. We, we did try to keep it away from the trees as much as possible.
How did you know to do that?
Because Sandy came to my office twice and sat down and we talked about it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sandy, next comment?
No, that's just, that's my big concern here, is that we're not going to be able to have any, any of those trees bordering the property, the evergreens. They really gave us a nice natural privacy screen.
Yeah.
And there was never, there's not a sharp turn in that brook right now. It's sharper now, and that's, that's another concern of mine. There's going to be a possibility of this being able to block up where it never has before. It's always been free-flowing. And I'm afraid of the angle that's been put into it.
Okay. Vaughn?
That has not been raised as a concern by any of our engineers who reviewed the project or any of the permitting agencies who reviewed the project. I think, given the size of the culvert, that, that's not something that, that we, that we're really concerned about. There are portions of the brook where I can see that happening, but not through this new portion of the culvert.
And, and, and could you just tell us who, who were the engineering team that you had involved in this?
GZA, GAO Environmental was the engineer on the project, Tom Jenkins, who has worked in Milford for many, many years and is probably the authority on this brook out of everybody, except for maybe Mike. But, so Tom and his team, specifically Rosalie Starvish was the project manager for this, and they, they put together the design and they actually helped also with the FEMA grant and with all the permitting effort as well.
Now, the permitting, is, is there a, a degree of engineering review during that permitting process?
Yes, there absolutely is.
And what are those levels?
DEP and Army Corps both, they conducted several site visits and they reviewed all the plans and specifications. They made comments and changes were made based on their comments. It was a long process. Army Corps took probably about nine months to, to go through.
Okay. Sandy, additional comments?
Yes, on, I guess there's a, a property that has a hill that's, Judy, was that his name? Lideo? They're going to replace some, it's like some telephone pole and walls that are probably, it looks like it's holding up the actual dirt that's on his property. But now, and this, these, this is what Vaughn had explained to me during one of our conversations, that she's going to be putting a stone wall, not a stone wall, but a regular cement wall there.
I don't think she's going to be putting it there.
Well, no, but, okay, it was, they're going to be putting a regular cement wall there.
Okay.
And the exact words were, "It's not going to be very pretty, so you're going to have to plant something in front of it." I can't plant anything in front of it because the brook's going to be there.
Okay.
I mean, it's just...
Vaughn, is the stone wall going to be pretty or not?
No, it's not stone. It's a very cement.
Okay.
I don't recall saying that, but I cannot make any promises as to how pretty it's going to be. It is going to be a concrete wall. What is there now, it, as she mentioned, is old telephone pole pieces and rocks and bricks just kind of piled up. The owner of that property is allowing the contractor to use his yard as a staging area
I saw that in the plans.
at, at no, at no cost to the town.
Yeah.
So that actually saved us quite a bit of money. And so at the end of the project, we are going to replace that wall that's made with debris, basically, with, with a concrete wall. Plantings will be able to be planted next to the wall as long as it's something that can grow in four feet of dirt. So it's, it's not that nothing can be planted there. And also, just to the point of any other walls or driveways or decks or sheds or anything else that needs to be removed for the construction, it will be replaced in kind. So if somebody loses their driveway because of the construction and it's an asphalt driveway, we will put back an asphalt driveway. That's all in the plans.
Sandy, the town has had experience with doing the brook work. In fact, in this area right here, this was initially installed without the black fence to the right on the Mullen property. And what happened after the installation, the homeowner approached the town, was concerned about the height of the wall. The town went to the scene, took measurements, and then separately reinstalled the fence. So, you know, please don't feel like, you know, you, you, you're going to be alone out in the wilderness with, with all of this work being done without your, your consent. This is your property, and you, you have given the permission of right of entry. You can rescind that, too. But, you know, there will be, there, there will be, but I'm saying, there will be avenues for whatever, you know, finish-type work that you desire.
I'm not concerned about anybody coming on the property. I know that that's going to happen, and I know that we're going to be informed that some, when the construction starts. That's not my concern at all. My concern is I'd like to have at least some semblance of my yard back, or at least I know I have it in the next five years and maybe have some type of greenery on the property rather than just nothing there, you know? That's my concern.
Okay.
Like I said, this has been our home for 51 years.
I understand.
And it's just being, it's, it's going to be pretty ugly because there's going to be nothing we can do. So that's just my point. And that's my only, my only concern about this.
Okay, well, I, I don't know what else to tell you other than, you know, the, the plans are, you know, what they are. They've been reviewed by, you know, very competent levels of engineers. I think it's going to rectify a problem that's been in your yard for quite some time that, you know, you've talked to me about, and you've indicated to me that it's depreciated your property. So this is actually going to appreciate your property. You know, with, with, with any act, there's a consequence, and, you know, to get the restoration of the ground so that you don't have a potential sinkhole, you may have to forego some greenery. You know, I don't know what the solution is to that, but I do know that when the town does these particular projects, and it also happened with the bike trail, the town was extremely accommodating to the neighbors on the bike trail, and, you know, that's the way the town operates. So anything reasonable that can be done, I'm sure the town will do. Bill?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Vaughn, I'm not an arborist nor am I a design engineer for work like this, but at the same time, I, I'd like to understand this because we're taking, we're taking a culvert that would, is currently above ground. Is that right? Sandy, it's currently underground?
Currently underground.
Okay, so you're going to reinforce it, you're going to make it...
Wide. We're going to make it wider.
You're going to go from six to 10 feet? Okay. And the top of that culvert will be concrete?
Correct.
Okay, so that it cannot collapse, have the metal plates and the requirements. Now, if I understand it, if I understood you and Sandy's point, on top of that concrete culvert, you're going to have approximately four feet of dirt.
That's correct.
All right, so I, I'm guessing this table is about three feet, and we're talking roughly. We're talking roughly about this much dirt from here to the ground level. So that won't support, you know, the heavy, the big trees, but certainly, there's an opportunity for plantings and to, to landscape in that area, right?
There cer, there certainly is, and...
So I think it's the trees and the size of the trees. I'm sorry.
And, and, and I understand her concern because they are, they are beautiful, mature trees.
Old growth, mature trees.
But there, there are, there are other plantings that would work in that, in that area.
Do you know if arborvitae's would work, blocking?
There are arborvitae's now.
That's what they are today?
Yes.
There are arborvitae's now. I asked a landscaper that I know, and he said, "Yeah, four feet would be fine for arborvitae's." And we did talk about, I mean, we can't replace them. They're probably 10 feet tall. We did talk about maybe six footers going back, so we're not talking about something that's tiny to start with.
So about my height, something could go back there?
Right, but, I mean, these, these are all discussions that we can continue to have.
And we don't have to have it here, but, you know, I want to reinforce something Brian said. I've not seen construction where the town made changes and was insensitive to the neighbors. And to the point that we've turned garages around so that as roads were, roads got wider, we turned a garage around so they'd have access to a side road. Yeah, I don't have one either. But, but, but that's, I've really not seen, but I think you, but let me say, let me say more important something. I think your being here is still very important.
Thank you.
All right, and it's, it's, it's very important that this board see it. It's very important that the various people trying to fund it see you and, and see how important that, that property is to you and your family. So I don't want to minimize that. I think we're going to be able to work it out, and I think what you hear is, you hear people dedicated to making sure that happens. I would tell you to have some faith, and if for any reason this conversation doesn't go in the direction you needed to, I would tell you to call me. I would tell you to call one of the members of the board. I would tell you to approach the members of the board. This is your room. We're sitting in your chairs. So I would encourage you to do that if, if for some reason, things aren't working the way you need to. But follow up with Vaughn because I think you're going to work something out. That's, that's my take.
And I don't want anyone to think that I don't appreciate all the work that they're going to do.
No, no, we heard you, but it's your yard.
This is something that really needs to be done, and I do understand that, you know? This is just one of my major concerns. I just don't want my property...
And I think, I think one of the things, the side benefits, too, Mr. Chairman, is I think what we'll probably do is we'll probably even have a better communication at the end of the process. I think we're all going to agree at the end. Maybe it was enhanced a little bit by hearing from residents, well, that, if, I'm sure we've been sent... from residents that, I'm sure we've been sensitive up to this point, but I'm sure we'll even have greater sensitivity just by hearing. I know it's, I have history with you, Scott, so I know that's your mode of operation, standard practice. I think you'll see...
That's been great.
Yeah, I think you'll see, I think you'll see improved communication as well. There's other people here and I'll let the chairman, I appreciate you giving me the time, Brian.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, you know, the extensive amount of communication that Vani had with the homeowner because despite some of the comments that were made, as we talked about, we found out there has been quite a bit of conversation.
One meeting.
Okay, so Sandy, we have other residents here from the area. I see Darlene and Ron. Did you want to comment on, you know, what was here?
Yes, I actually, with a little bit of history to answer some of the questions that came up in the previous discussion, I don't know if you remember Irene D'Onofrio?
Yes.
Here from Town Hall. She lived across the street from our property and on a regular basis, she did have the Highway Department come and clear all of the brush on both sides of the brook, you know, between Congress Terrace all the way to West Walnut, as far as I know. That was done every year. We thought it was just part of the routine that was done as far as the maintenance. So maintenance is an issue and I think, we feel that it has contributed to some of the deterioration of the brook over the years. And then with some of the debris falling into the brook and obstructing the brook in different places. So going back, that's going back 23 years that we moved into our house and it was maintained, the landscaping on the sides of the brook. The second thing was, you know, this, you know, the 10-year, definitely would want a 25-year storm. We're coming up on 10 years. It was October 15th, to be exact, 2005, that the last major incident of flooding happened. Some of the other issues along different parts of the brook, you know, that resulted in West Walnut Street needing to be repaired. And it continued the different storms past that to continue to keep eroding different parts. Every time there's a storm, it doesn't matter what time of the day it is, I see the Highway Department, I'm sure they'll be out there Friday because there's another storm coming through, driving around and checking the brooks. I mean, but we can't predict, I mean, 10 years ago, that storm, there was no water in our basement and no problems. Five hours later, we had water up into our cars in the driveway with like a river running through because of the amount of rain, the obstruction of that underground culvert and just the immensity of the storm. So we're coming up on 10 years again. So two years after that, we had, Westbrook Street had the sinkhole in the middle of the street. That was a 10-month project. I think that was one of Scott's first projects. So, you know, so as far as the communication issue goes, we have received certified notification, which is required, but usually it's the, it's been the neighbors that have been calling or initiating. We haven't had any meetings, like let's say this meeting coming up, once the engineer is designed to meet with the people, that would, may have been helpful, maybe earlier, just to discuss how things were being done and how we were pursuing things. That's all come up by us asking questions and sometimes getting different answers because some things get delayed and everything's up in the air. We've had several town meetings where we've been asked for money for engineers for different projects on past FEMA projects that the town has appropriated. I mean, it was probably one of the main reasons, not the only reason, that I became a town meeting member, was to make sure that anything that the town does for the brook, for the schools, I mean, we all have our different motivations as far as Town Hall, you know, Town Meeting, you know, it's gotten me more involved in different town aspects this brook has by bringing me and making me pay more attention to not just the brook, but everything in town. This has been going on a long, long time and I would like to see the whole thing done. I mean, when it was approved, talked, discussed, doing the whole brook and not just different sections, we've had too many parts of this brook have been nothing but band-aided. You know, every, only half of Westbrook Street going towards West Walnut was done and only one side of that wall because that's all they had the money for. West Walnut Street, only half of that has been done. When they did Westbrook Street and it took 10 months, they ran into other problems. The water issues, the water running underground from the brook in the streets and different lines. This just needs to be done and I just, and Main Street, you know, I looked at, you know, all the different streets that are affected by the brook and Brian, you basically wouldn't be able to get to work if you try, if all of those streets were closed down. It was the way that I looked at it. So I am all for the whole project, I mean, Westbrook, those two projects, but we definitely need to think even past that into the future for other parts of it.
Well, I mean, and I think, you know, you're saying, you're actually giving a very good rationale as to why this project should go forward and be done. And that's the action that the town is taking. You know, going back in '07, I believe it is, when we had the complete assessment of the brook and it was $8 million plus, it was submitted to the state. And that was the genesis of the environmental bond bill aspect and the thought was, you know, if that bond bill for $4 million could get issued, the town would be able to match it and would be able to do the entire brook, soup to nuts. Well, the bond bill still hasn't issued and there are other priorities that the town deals with, you know, on a daily basis. So, you know, I think the decision's been made to try to target this, you know, on a spot basis. And right now, the spots are Congress Terrace, Westbrook Street, and Main Street. And, you know, I think these folks here have done a nice job targeting some federal money to help everybody to do it. So I think that the point out of this is, as this project goes, gets to fruition, and that's not atypical on projects, you know, sometimes it is, they are very fluid. There are a lot of moving parts. When you're dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, when you're dealing with the federal government, the state, you know, with different town departments, it is difficult to give a precise course of action at a precise time. You can only take things one step at a time. So the step we're at now is to decide whether or not we want to support the funding request at Town Meeting to get these two particular projects done. And I think what will happen is, hopefully, the Town Meeting will approve that and as this project proceeds, there's no question in my mind that the contractor, the town overseeing it, will be meeting with the landowners, because you're more than a butters, you're actually landowners. This is your land, will be meeting with the landowners as the project proceeds to go through all of the details. That's what happened with other aspects of the brook. That's what happened with the bike trail. So, you know, again, I think it's great that you came here. It's great to get your input and hopefully this project can go forward, can clean up a big problem in your area, but it's not going to happen without your input. Now, there's another lady here and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I know you came. Did you want to address us on this issue?
No, I live at 27 Westbrook Street.
Okay.
I live there.
Okay.
My only concern was the same as my sister's. We have a beautiful landscape on the side of our house and what's going to be left is a cement wall with a big barn up on the hill where he stores all of his junk behind the barn. I know it's the property where you're going to be storing your...
Putting the equipment.
Putting the equipment, but to go from what we have to that site is, I mean, that's our deck. That's all I'm going to see.
Well, you know, like I said, there's always trade-off for works that needs to be done, but I'm sure as the project goes forward, you know, Bill, you know, just off the top of his head targeted, you know, a potential remedial action. So, you know, that's going to happen, you know, don't, you know, don't think the worst. Don't think the worst.
And personally, Mr. Chairman, I'm worried that the view you have today is not the view you're going to have after the next rainstorm. And so the one you want to preserve and the wall that you have and the view that you see is one I can promise is not going to be there when these metal plates fall through or there's additional...
Trust me, I'm on the lawn and they have to watch me to make sure I don't fall in.
Fall in, yeah, I tell you to be safe.
You know, I mean, trust, I...
We don't want that to happen.
But so...
I know this is financial and everything, but I just figured, you're ready to go, you're going forward. It's going to be done. I just want to know where we stand and what could be done.
I just have a process question. Was the first time the folks we're communicated with, the residents, I'm going to say 19 properties, it looks like 19, was that through certified mail?
Who sent that out?
Yeah, I believe it was through certified. It was the right-of-entry forms that went out through certified mail. But there were also, we had a hearing with the Conservation Commission where the plans were presented. I believe I presented this in front of the Board of Selectmen, so it's been out there a few times.
I want to be constructive because it's, but I would tell you, rather than send certified letters to homeowners, and I appreciate, you're working very hard, nights and days, to hold public hearings to be in front of this board, but not everybody sees the things in the newspaper that there's going to be a hearing for their property. They're not sent letters to let them know there's going to be a hearing for their property. They may or may not be in tune with the Board of Selectmen meetings and get an opportunity to watch you go through your excellent presentations. And if the first contact that we made was through a certified letter, I would tell you I would have, I would rethink it. Now, I don't know if I would have had that suggestion on the front end, but reviewing it in hindsight, and hindsight's always 20/20, I would tell you face-to-face is a great way to start. Of course, you have to go certified letter. It's a legal requirement when you're asking for right-of-entry, but not it being the introduction to what we were going to do. So I would look and make the assumption that not everybody on that, whose property is affected, and granted, it's their property, but not everybody's property is affected, has seen this meeting, has participated in the hearings and may need a little bit more face time with you and the contractor and Scott to feel better through this process. And I don't mean it to be critical. I just mean it to just make a point. That's just...
And we will, once we award the contract, we will definitely set up a public meeting for the residents to, an evening for them to come in and have their questions answered.
And I think walking their property is going to be a part of that process, I would hope. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I don't want you three folks leaving here without thinking that you've done a great job on this, okay? This has been a big problem for the residents and you have been the key people in getting this thing, no pun intended, off the ground and rectified. So thanks, thanks very much for all the work that you did. And the residents, Sandy, I know you know about this, so, you know, if there's any questions that you have, you know who to contact and you know what to do, but hopefully the Town Meeting will approve this. And in fact, I think this board needs to, well, do you want to take a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Approve, I guess the...
Alternative one.
I was going to say the payment method that was suggested by the Finance Director.
I want to make sure...
And this is Article, oh, Mr. Town Administrator, do you know which article this is at the Town Meeting?
I can get it for you in one second.
Because I think we accept, did you accept this one, Bill, from the last motion?
I think we did.
Board of Selectmen, we did.
From the last one.
We went for the full amount, I think.
Oh, here it is, Article, is it 36? Can I look at that correctly?
I think it's 36.
It is, Godfrey Buck, 36.
Okay, all right.
But it has a TBD. You know, I still think it's worthwhile that we make the motion and approve Option 1 as presented this evening, fully funding this portion and the portions that Scott and Vani have talked about and that our Finance Director so skillfully worked with others to make sure that we can, we can pay for. So I'd make a motion to appropriate and approach Town Meeting for Alternate 1, which is a full appropriation for $2.6 million.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move on.
Brian, can I take a moment? I just want to thank the citizens of Milford and all the, all the help they had this weekend cleaning up the town. They saved the Highway Department a ton of work and I really appreciate it. Excellent job.
Yes, we're going to address that at the next agenda item, but you want to take off now?
So I just want to say thanks.
Okay.
I think I've been here long enough.
Now, we're getting a report from the Town Administrator on that.
Stay, you can stay.
You can stay if you want.
Stay with your wife.
Okay, the next item that we have is the Personnel Board with their proposed classification and compensation plan. So with that, I see various members of the Personnel Board here. Come on down. How are you?
How are you?
Good. Slide open more.
Sure.
Come on, come on.
That's where I am.
Come to the center, come to the center. We don't want to be extremists. Bring everybody to the center.
Go ahead, one more, Jim. That was another question.
Yes.
Are you going to be stereo?
You got double...
We know you're not shy in front of a microphone.
Only when I'm speaking.
Double barrel action.
Nope.
You can sing if you'd like, but...
All right, so let's see. What we have from the Personnel Board, there is actually a recommendation for Article 2 in terms of salary increases. There is a final report summary dated April 15th, 2015, which we've been provided with. Prior to that, there were various spreadsheets. I'll leave it at that. Various spreadsheets. And I'm looking forward to the presentation because I had a little trouble trying to figure out where all these spreadsheets fit. So with that, whenever you're ready.
Do you want to do the intro or do you want me to just...
No, why don't you go right ahead. Well, just to give you a little background, I don't know if you're aware, that we have done a compensation analysis. The last one that was done was the Bennett Study. That was over 10 years ago, I believe, so Dennis is going to, what's that? Dennis is going to present the results of the current study and our recommendations.
Take your time, Dennis. I know it must feel like a year to you. It's...
Yeah, let's bring Warren up. We need to run out the clock a little. Warren can look at it.
He's been in there.
Can you come up and...
Is he the battle that steps out of the box all the time?
Yeah, you got to run the clock out a little bit. We need Warren to come here and give us some, give us some direction, so...
Ordinarily, at our meetings, I lead the digressions.
Okay.
But I think you want to get home before midnight tonight, so I'm going to try to not digress. That's why we have Dennis just going to present.
All right, well, as soon as you're ready, we're all set to go. Does the board have any questions beforehand? No, well...
I'd rather have them go through the...
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to...
I know.
Kill some dead time here.
Dead to here.
Anything else you want to talk about?
Talk about Celtics.
No, not them.
Talk about their last game or the Celtics for that matter.
That doesn't sound too good.
There you go.
Is there anything else we can hit while they're...
Oh, there it is. We...
There we go. We're almost here. Okay, all right, good. Yep. What are we, rebooting?
You're all right. It's going to refresh.
So again, just to clarify, Dennis Carroll is going to give the overview on the results of the compensation study as well as the recommendations.
Thank you all for...
Thank you all for having us tonight. This is the Proposed Classification and Compensation Plan Final Report Summary. We've spent a considerable amount of time working on this. Back in October of 2013, the town meeting approved the study, and the board has met over thirty times at various places. We've met at the Town Hall, and also at the police station, many a Saturday, and also weeknights. There are twenty salaried positions and thirty-eight hourly rated positions. Several positions, such as the custodians and dispatches, employ more than one individual, and several positions, like the Assistant Town Council and Planning Assistant, are unfilled at this time. The current eight grade levels for both salaried and hourly rated will be consolidated into five levels for salary and three levels for the hourly. The purpose of the study was to establish and maintain a classification and compensation plan that is fair, consistent manner, internally and externally equitable, competitive, within the fiscal constraints of the town. What was accomplished, the consultant that we worked with met with employees of the town, the employees that are covered under Article Two, and explained to them that we were going to be reviewing all of the job descriptions, and also, at that time, if they had any changes they wanted made to the job descriptions, to make them. And they would review them with their supervisor and then pass them back on to the consultant who rewrote all of the job descriptions. So all of the positions, both salaried and hourly, have all been rewritten and are all basically in the same format now. But the job descriptions were written accurately to describe the essential functions one employee is required to do, and the minimum qualifications, the knowledge, ability, and skills to carry out the job duties. The classification plan, the internal equity, was based upon the job descriptions. The positions have been classified based on level of responsibility and independence. There's a process that we go through when we rate a job that goes through, I believe it's thirteen different pieces of information relative to that job, in the area of responsibility, number of people supervised, the dexterity required for that particular position, the educational background, the experience level, are all taken into consideration. And we rate each job accordingly. There's points that are derived based on each one of those classifications, and then totaling the points, we actually then able to rank that particular position within the total number of jobs in the town. So we went through that process as well, and on the compensation plan, the competitive salary plan has been developed that is competitive with the marketplace. And a list of the towns that we surveyed, the consultant went out and, based on the selection of towns that we provided, and some that he provided, did a study of all of the salaried positions and some hourly positions to compare whether or not our rates were competitive with the marketplace. And here's a list of the towns that were studied. And I sorted this in order of population. So we have Medway, Auburn, Bellingham, Holliston, Easton, Walpole, Melford, North Attleboro, Mansfield, Shrewsbury, Franklin, Natick, and Marlborough. Any questions at all on the survey?
No, I think I'm gonna reserve them. I'm hoping you're gonna get to them.
Okay.
Will, do you have any questions on this?
No, not yet.
Dennis, let me just ask a quick question.
Sure.
So how did you identify these particular towns?
We, there was a study that was done back in 2001.
Bennett Study?
Yeah. And some of the same towns are used, were used in the study as well. And we also looked at towns that were of a close size, as well as some that had, for instance, Marlborough has a hospital, and we have a hospital, and that plays into some of the responsibilities of the employees in the town. So we tried to pick places that were as close to Melford as we could, and had some of the aspects of the town that we had.
Is there any particular reason that out of the thirteen towns that you chose to match Melford up with, Melford has the lowest median income of all communities?
Is there a particular reason?
Yeah.
I don't have a scientific answer for that, but my answer would probably be that we have a lot of illegals living in town and.
No, no, I'm not asking to comment on the reason why the median income, what it is. I'm asking you to comment on why, out of these thirteen towns that you chose, Melford is the lowest median income of the communities you're comparing it to.
At the time we chose, we didn't even know the median income.
You didn't take that into consideration?
No, it wasn't one of the considerations that we had as a criteria.
Okay. Would that be the same with income per capita? Melford's the lowest out of the thirteen communities on income per capita. Was that a conscious decision or not?
No, no, no. This actually was put together after we completed the study. Laura actually did this about a month ago, right, Laura? We did not have this comparison beforehand. The towns that we selected were based on just general knowledge of the area and the towns around.
So you did the study based on towns that you chose without looking at the demographics of the town?
We had left that up to the consultant to look at the demographics and ensure that we were comparing apples to apples.
Do you feel, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Do you feel you compared apples to apples?
After looking at this? No, no.
Because that was one of the glaring, and to say it differently, Brian, of the thirteen communities there, twelve of them have median incomes and per capita income greater than Melford. We're actually the lowest of the bunch. So they're all greater, and it would be no surprise to me.
And we're right in the middle as far as population.
Right, right, right.
I understand that population, but this is an economic study in terms of.
It is, but I mean, whether you live in Holliston or you live in Melford, in the labor market, you're competing for the same job. I mean, if I lived in Holliston, I'm, after a job in Melford, I'm gonna expect to get the same pay as I would in Holliston.
Really?
Wouldn't you?
This is your study. I'm just trying to get the rationale and the basis, you know, as to how the study was put together, you know?
Well, the selection criteria for the towns was done without the benefit of this particular information.
Okay. And you were relying on the consultant to provide that information?
Right. So as I had mentioned earlier, the job descriptions have been written in an accurate, consistent format, essential functions, knowledge, ability, and skill, in accordance with FLSA and ADA regulations. And the consultant is the one that actually went through and did all of those. We reviewed every one of them and made changes to them, as well as having the employees review them, and many of the employees came back with additional changes. They've all now been incorporated, and we finalized all of the job descriptions. Classification plans have been developed based on the application of universal position evaluation criteria. A new classification plan consisting of five grade levels has been developed for salaried positions to replace the current eight, that is consistent with the organization structure of town departments. A separate classification plan has been developed for hourly positions consisting of three grade levels that is consistent with the organization structure of town departments. Salary positions will be reviewed in the marketplace annually, and hourly will be reviewed every three years. We're gonna do some every year, we'll do one-third of them, so that on a three-year basis, we'll have completed all of them. Differences in the marketplace that are greater than five percent will result in a possible rate change for that particular job class. So we're gonna review the, survey the data in the area and make sure that each job remains competitive in the area. And, I mean, we're up for recommendations on additional towns or elimination of some of the towns within that list.
No, I'm just seeking to understand. So when I see that differences of greater than five percent results in possible rate change, is that to the median, is that to?
It's to the midpoint, and it'll change the rate on, and I don't know if I can hand this out now, but it will change the rate on each one of these grade levels. On the grade levels, we have the eight steps.
Are these different than the spreadsheets that we have?
Uh, yeah, slightly.
Okay. So now, what are these?
This is the proposed 2016 salary compared to the current plan with a two percent increase.
This is the same one I have?
Now, there's some basic differences in information here. We've got some additional job functions that weren't included there, and we've got some moved.
Okay, alright, so is this to update what I was giving? Okay, alright, okay, great.
So if I might.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure the question was understood. So I'm trying to do it in mathematical equation, trying to take that sentence and mean something mathematical. So differences of greater than five percent will result in a possible rate change. So what does that mean? Five percent of what?
I don't know if we'll get a different answer from different members of the board, but my answer to that question is that if we do a survey, and we have three or four positions within a particular range, that have an increase of over five percent, we will look at whether or not it makes sense to change these steps.
But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is five percent of what?
Five percent of what? A five percent difference in salary. So if the median salary for a particular position, and that, that would be step five here. That's the midpoint.
Gotcha. Alright, so if I were to use the same towns, which was the basis of the study, and I were to pick twelve communities whose median income was greater than Melford's in per capita income, would I not expect to see five percent differences in the median?
Compared to what we have here? I hope not, because we just did the survey.
So your goal was to hit the median?
Our goal was to make sure that each one of the jobs that we had classified was with a competitive rate.
Right, but again, I'm trying to make sense of it from a math standpoint, what competitive? You break down competitive, I'm just trying to understand, was it targeted towards the median of these thirteen?
It was targeted toward the midpoint.
Okay. I think I understand. So if I wanted to back this out, I'd be able to look at the median, there's data somewhere that says I'd be able to look at the median for like positions from the thirteen communities, or actually it'd be twelve, right? We're not comparing against ourselves. And I'd be able to see the rationale for the changes. What did you do in cases? Was there ever cases where it was lower?
No.
We were always the lowest of the?
I can't recall any.
No, that's not, that's not accurate, though.
Okay. We were lower than the median?
Sometimes we're above the median.
Okay.
We have multiple jobs.
Sure, sure, many, many, yeah.
And I think you're putting far too much emphasis on median income, because that, our concern was to take some towns that we felt were comparable in some respects, not all respects. And frankly, at the time that we started the study, we did not look at the median income. I think what's important to note is that Melford is competitive. You wanna say we're lower on, lower median income, then our salaries probably should be lower, but they aren't. And, you know, many of our salaries were very competitive. Some were above the midpoint. There were a few that are below the midpoint. And there's gonna be room for growth for people who were below the midpoint. And then, I think, the five percent that we're talking about, we're gonna have steps, Dennis will explain, you know, the new number of steps that we're gonna have.
The five versus eight?
Yeah.
I was only using.
That's not.
Go ahead.
You know, we've got.
I'm just using your words.
Yeah.
In the third bullet.
It will be, right, there's five grade levels, but then, in the grade levels, there are steps. So you gotta understand, there are grade levels, there are steps.
Okay.
Okay? So the steps, very few people are going, are currently capped out to the maximum step. So the purpose, part of what our plan was, was to get to the midpoint to make sure that our current salaries are competitive with other towns around, and other towns in the Commonwealth. And at the point that we get to the top step, the way things go now, we automatically give everybody two percent, or three percent, whatever the budget allows us for. We're not gonna be doing that anymore. So what the five percent deals with, really deals with people who max out. Because along the way, there're gonna be steps, they're not gonna be maxed out. So that only is gonna apply when you get to the top step, and, you know, there's not gonna be an automatic two percent, or three percent, or one and a half percent. So in order to be fair with the people, once they've maxed out, that's when we came up with the five percent. So that if we see that they're at maximum, well, then that's it, you're at maximum. But if we see that other communities, you know, go beyond what our maximum is, then that's gonna give us a chance to reassess the midpoint that would also be an adjustment in the steps.
And that's exactly what I was trying to understand. So it's the maximum paid for a position, and not the median of thirteen communities, that we're gonna make the five percent adjustment. That's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, right. There would not be a five percent adjustment, Bill, until and unless somebody has maxed out. And, you know, we've determined that our midpoint is below what other midpoints.
You're right, Dennis. We would get different answers if we asked different people. Alright, I think I understand this better. I don't wanna hold up the rest of the presentation because eventually it'll get down to specific jobs.
Okay, the separate classification plan has been developed for hourly positions consisting of three grade levels that is consistent with the organization structure of the town. Salary positions were reviewed in the marketplace annually, and hourly will be reviewed every three years. Differences greater than five percent will result in possible rate changes.
Differences five percent, so to your question, you were trying to see what they were benchmarking that five percent against. Was it the high-end job or the median job?
We got two.
Okay. Do you understand that the question, 'cause I'm still hung up on that, what Bill had asked. I think he's trying to determine, and now I'm trying to determine, on that differences of greater than five percent. So the benchmark would be the highest level for other communities or the median level to measure whether or not ours is five percent differential? Is that what we're trying to figure out?
Whether adjustments are to be made. Whether adjustments are to be made.
Right.
What's the...
I was gonna use step five, which is the midpoint. If you look at step five on this sheet.
But it sounds as though you were only looking, it sounds as though it was gonna go against the maxed out, the top level.
No, not the way I understand it. The way I understand it is, we would survey the salaries in the area. If the salaries in the area determine that the midpoint for that particular job was five percent or greater above our midpoint for that particular job, then we would assess whether or not we should change the rates on those steps.
So, was this, has this policy been committed to writing as part of this proposal?
Not in detail, not to the extent where we need to define exactly to the letter how we're going to go through that calculation. I mean, there's been discussion between us about how it's gonna be done, but nobody's actually sat down and done a procedure for it yet.
Okay, alright, okay.
But we have done it by position in this current plan.
No, I just, this is the second time I've seen it, 'cause I did it from the FinComs, so I'm just kinda trying to...
So, we know what, by position? How many positions are we talking about?
I think it was the first, first...
Thirty-eight hourly rate.
Till fifty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
So, of the fifty-eight positions, 'cause I don't think we...
It affects probably close to, I believe it was a little under a hundred people told, because you've got multiple positions. You have custodians, you've got a multiple number of dispatchers. So, you know, the same job description applies for each dispatcher.
Sure, sure.
Not each custodian, but depending on whether they're a supervisor or just a, you know...
To how many employees does this affect?
A little under a hundred, I think, between ninety.
There are some positions that are vacant at the present time.
Right, but the positions it affects, if we fill those tomorrow, it'll still affect them, it's the positions. Okay. Alright, I'll let you get back to your presentation.
Will, do you have any questions or anything?
Yes.
I know you saw this before, but we have, Bill and I, you haven't seen this before, yeah?
Not until it made the...
Yeah, yeah, we haven't seen it.
No, I know Mark Shane and I saw it at the personnel meeting, Personnel Board Meeting, well, I think that was a few months ago now. I guess just being a simple guy, what do we, I understand the competitive thing, but what are we trying to fix? Because so far, I've heard that we are competitive. Seth?
Well, we're competitive to a point, but there hasn't been any changes in thirteen years. You know, having been on the Finance Committee recently, you know, and your board, Brian, has dealt with the IT people in those positions. Positions evolve, they're constantly evolving. With the computer age and technology involved, some of the requirements of various departments have changed. One example, building commissioner, prior to Mr. Erickson taking over that job, there was no, there was no computerization whatsoever. He's done a fantastic job of getting everything right line, and you go down to the Building Commissioner's office and you ask for, to see some records going back several years, they can put their fingers on it almost instantaneously. So, not only is the requirements of the people who head departments evolved tremendously in the thirteen years, but also the support staff, the requirements and the knowledge that they require has also evolved, and that's what we've been trying to address. You know, we found out some salaries were competitive and some were not where they should be. You know, we raided the IT people and took some criticism, because people were saying, well, the private sector, you know, would pay far more. So, that's the other thing, you talk about apples and oranges. We have to be careful to, and people, when you evaluate, you know, the results of the study, you have to be careful that we're dealing with municipalities, we're comparing with other municipalities. We're not necessarily comparing, and we can't compare, what somebody in the private sector doing somewhat comparable work would get paid, because now you're dealing with apples and oranges. We're trying to deal with apples and apples, or oranges and oranges.
It seems where we talked about differences of greater than five percent would result in a possible rate change, which I understand, but just from, I guess, our standpoint of the FinComs, that would make it awfully difficult to budget.
Well, if you looked at this particular plan, if you see the X's, where the X's are right now, as years roll out, those X's move up to the next level. So, for instance, the network administrator currently is sixty-three, seven, twenty-nine, proposed for this next fiscal year. The year after, it's gonna be sixty-six, nine, thirty-seven. There's not gonna be any change in that. The only way that this is going to end up being changed is if, as people max out and they get into the eighth step, they're gonna be frozen. And it's not fair to leave them frozen at that eighth step without taking into consideration what the marketplace is. So, you look at the marketplace, and if the marketplace is greater than five percent, you make a decision as to whether or not you wanna increase the rates for that particular step.
And currently, that's adjusted through the COLAs that historically we vote on.
A two percent or a one and a half?
We do a COLA every year that, in positions that can just continue to evolve from a salary perspective.
So, from a budgeting perspective, I would think this would be easier. You can look out five years and say, based on this plan, this is what the salaries are going to be.
To Warren's point, people are still gonna max out, people are still gonna be at the high level.
Yeah.
Why can't people max out, and why isn't it fair to allow people to max out? I mean, I can max out.
Well, it is, it is.
I heard it's not fair.
Well, it could be, in some situations, it could be unfair. That's why the five percent is not...
It's only unfair if it's...
That's not cast in stone.
No, no, no.
So, that would be up to town meeting, that would be up to the Finance Committee's input, the Personnel Board's input, in the future, okay? What we're trying to do is make this a living document, a living process, so that we don't get behind in some respects and have to wait every ten to thirteen years. The various studies, this one we would call the Jacobs Study, our consultant is a fellow named Don Jacobs. The one before that was a company called Bennett, the one before that was Olney.
But Warren, hold on, I'm only using the words you're using, or I'm only using the words being given to me, and I'm only using the words presented in the document. So, and I'm not trying to challenge as much as I'm trying to seek to understand. And when I use the same words, then I get challenged, so I wanna make sure that, you know what I mean? I wanna be fair in this process.
Bill, that's why we're here, we're here to try to...
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do is understand it, you have to remember, you've taken thirty meetings to acclimate to the thought process and with the consultant. I'm surprised the consultant's not here, frankly, but that said, I'm drinking from a fire hose, but I understand salary compensation studies. I understand the concept of equity. I can do rough math for five percents and, you know, do some of that, so I can follow along, but there's some of it that's not making sense. Brian picked the big one, frankly, because I think it is important when we talk about competition that we look at similar demographics and the ability of the taxpayer to pay it, right? We do a lot of great things in this community, but we're not gonna always pay compensation for people commensurate with NADA.
You know, Bill, if I could just interject, because as you just spoke, a light went off in my head.
I saw that light, Warren, I saw that light.
Lit up the room.
Well, maybe not.
It's a bright bulb.
Maybe a dull light.
It's one of those new ones that warms up.
You know, one of the things that you're looking at, when, you know, you're talking about, you know, median income, per capita income, but one of the things that has to be factored in, and it certainly, you know, we couldn't, we wouldn't have the time, the expertise, or the knowledge, is that we have, Milford, we have a tremendous industrial base. You look at some of those other towns that we're comparing to, and they don't have anywhere near that. Now, we didn't single out, you know, the commercial and the industrial, but I think it's common knowledge, you take the towns that we had listed up there, and we certainly, and on top of that, we have our dual tax rate.
I would expect to see it.
So, that's why, you know, if you get hung up on just the median or the per capita, it's gonna skew, it's gonna skew things, okay? And so, you know, we couldn't put all of that together, not in the time that we had, and not on the budget that we had. So, we think that the towns that we used, you know, if you, and if you want, maybe we can go back and we'll, or somebody can compare some of the other, some of the other income to the communities. And there may be some statistics. We relied on, what were the statistics, Laura, that we used, from which book was it? Anyway, it was information put out by the state that gives you an opportunity to compare every single community.
Yeah, no, I understand that, Warren, the thing that I found alarming really was that it kind of was done reversed, that the towns were picked, the matchups were done, then the demographic information on the towns were looked at. I would've done it reverse, I would've examined the demographics, then found the towns, and I don't know that I would've had median income at the very bottom. You know, I mean, yeah, you're taking into account your average tax bill, I mean, all of that sort of thing, but I mean, I'm very surprised to hear that, you know, this information was put together post-study. I would've thought it would've been done pre-study to then identify the comparable towns.
Well...
That's the only thing that I thought was unusual.
I'm the only holdover from the Bennett Study, so the rest of the Personnel Board, you know, relies in large measure on some of the historical stuff that I can provide.
I remember the Bennett Study, I was on the board about a year when that came on.
Who was also with me on the Personnel Board at the time.
Yeah.
And at the time that we did the Bennett Study, we didn't even use comparison of other towns, 'cause we didn't think that that was necessarily a fair thing to do.
There were other towns compared in the Bennett Study.
Pardon?
There were other towns compared in the Bennett Study.
No, that was never a part of our analysis. We, yes, we had data on other towns, but that was not, you know, the motivating or the sole factor. We didn't have charts, similar, you know, what we're doing here is a totally different concept than any of the prior studies. For the last forty years or more, Milford had the pretty much the exact same, you know, steps and grade levels, and, you know, what we did with the Bennett Study and what they did on previous studies was, well, let's revise the job descriptions, let's come up with what we think is a fair and competitive salary base. And that was done. And if there were, there was never any attempt to make an adjustment to what the market was doing around us.
Oh, boy, that's not my recollection, but you know something?
What we had...
Wait a minute, Warren, I got the Bennett Study at my office, I'm gonna check it tomorrow.
Go ahead, my guess. For years, what we did was COLA, you know, what town meeting is always done.
That was after the Bennett Study, I remember. The idea of the Bennett Study was gonna set the benchmark, the positions were gonna be graded based upon competing and comparative communities, and then that was supposed to end it, and then it was just gonna be cost of living increases on those positions.
And cost of living increases didn't take into account market changes, market. We don't call it cost of living, 'cause it was never cost of living anyway. What we're talking about now are market adjustments, MAs, market adjustment. We're not calling them cost of living adjustments.
In this study now, this is, yeah, okay.
And that is a fundamental and significant change in the direction that this study was taken compared to prior studies. And...
Okay, good.
Just as an example, in my short time on the board, the number of jobs that have come before us that people are starting to fill, they're always asking for three or four steps above what the current pay grades are. No one's coming and saying, okay, we can hire somebody at the first step or second step. They're always kinda, in fact, some of them are already, they're coming in at max. So, this is in part an attempt to give us a little bit of...
Particularly within the IT group, I mean, we're constantly...
Better range based on, and again, based on what the going rate is, especially with jobs like IT positions.
The IT positions have been extremely difficult to rate, because we are significantly behind the curve competitively to the market. People come and compare the IT salaries to those in the private sector, and the municipalities fall significantly short, so we look for ways to retain talent or pull talent in. And on top of that, as far as the cost of living increases go, our board is usually the first board to ask to kind of set the pace for COLA increases. And we're usually asked to keep that COLA increase low, so it's very difficult for those employees to get a significant pay change.
Agreed, yeah, and that's not, I agree with that a hundred percent. And I understand the concept of the market adjustments as well, I think I get what we're trying to do.
As I'm just saying, Brian, like, you know, whenever we rate, a lot of the new positions that come in, to Charlie's point, we're looking for ways to increase the salary constantly.
Right, but we're not hiring recent college graduates or people with zero experience to the entry-level positions anyway.
No, we're looking for somebody with significant market experience.
So, it would make sense, it's logical that somebody would wanna come in at a higher rate.
Yeah, but they're coming in at the cap, so where do they go from there?
I understand, but, you know, that's...
That's the challenge, so how do I, not only, how do I make the adjustment to get them here, and how do I keep them here?
I would tell you, if we're talking about IT?
Well, we're talking about IT, we're talking about other areas too, it's just, I'm not saying... I'm not saying it's every job, but we're up against more and more situations to recruit and retain talent for the town. So, the discussion has to happen one way or another. I mean, this is an example of what we can do to take steps forward. There were multiple, multiple criteria in terms of how we selected the area. Brian picked out one that was important to him, but we neglected to talk about the other ones that were on the board.
I picked out two.
I'm sorry, two, but I think there were six or seven.
But I mean, if we're talking about an economic study...
No, I don't disagree with you about population.
Those two, the economics, I mean, population is fine, but to me, population is not determinative on this particular study. It's an economic study, you're talking about compensating people, so look at the demographics in terms of the money coming in, that's all.
Granted, I understand, and I agree, but, you know...
But it doesn't matter, because you guys didn't look at the information on these particular towns before you picked the towns.
Well, we didn't look at the per capita information before we picked the towns, the consultant was supposed to do that. But again, I'm not passing the buck, we should've benchmarked his work before we move forward with that particular segment.
Alright.
I mean, the other thing I think that's important for the board to know, and Will would know this, because at the hearing that we had, that he and Mark Shane attended, that was the first attempt that we made, we held the meeting and discussed what we were doing with all the employees. So, you know, we gave them an update, 'cause we met with the employees when we first opened the study. Our consultant had talked to all the employees with respect to getting job descriptions updated. And when we had had some of our, you know, our preliminary stuff done, you know, we called all... And when we had had some of our, you know, our preliminary stuff done, you know, we called all, all the employees together again, and we, we listened to some of their input, and as a result, Brian, that's why some of the, you know, you asked, well, these the same spreadsheets that we got before, and so. We, we've made some adjustments, we listened to what people had to say to us.
There were a number of appeals from different employees that we, we sat down and met with.
In fact, at the time, we were talking, the five percent that we've spent a lot of time talking about now. Initially, we talked about making it ten percent, but we felt that that, that would, would not be fair to employees maxed out, because there may never be a ten percent, or would, you know, they could be retired before that ten percent. So, we felt five percent was a more realistic number. There, there were other things that we did, you know, we, you know, we originally only had four grade levels, and we were talking, you know, and it was brought to our attention that, that, you know, they were too condensed. So, now subsequently, you now have five, but initially, when we unveiled it, we had four. We listened to the employees and, and, and just as we're gonna listen to you, if we have to fine tune this, we certainly would fine tune it. That's one of the reasons why we're here, is to, to, to roll it out. You know, sometimes when you're working on a project, you, you sometimes don't see all the trees around. So, you know, we welcome your input, if we've given you somewhat conflicting answers, we, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
But, but essentially, I think, you know, what you heard is pretty much, you know, where we are at this point with the, with the study, and we.
Okay.
And, and, you know, what we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask your board to support this, we're gonna ask town meeting to support it. You know, there can always be adjustments on an annual basis of that, you know, there're gonna be some bugs that we might have to work out. We think that this is a far superior way, and a far better and more equitable way to, to address salary and compensation of town employees who are not unionized.
Okay.
And, you know, so if, if there are some flaws in it, I'm sure we'll work those out in a short period of time.
Mr. Chairman, just the only caution to salary, when we're talking about making adjustments after we've done this?
Excuse me, I didn't.
We're, we're talking about if there's flaws in it. See, I wanna make sure this survives a, a deeper level of review, so that I can get behind it. But to your point, and the caution I have for everybody on the personnel board is, if we talk about going in with it, and there can, there's, always can be adjustments, you realize those adjustments can only be upward, they can never be backwards.
That's right.
So.
And, and that's why over the years, there's some people who had maxed out, because, you know, they.
I keep hearing this maxed out.
When we did the Bennett study, there were some people who were getting paid well above what the maximum step was.
The health agent is one of them.
Yeah, and all they got over the years was that COLA, because they, they, they was, you know, they had already maxed out. The director of, whatever the title, for the sewer, sewer chairman, director of sewer, and, and the, the health agent. Those were two that have been frozen for the thirteen years since the Bennett study, other than COLA increases.
I, I'm just gonna pause it right here, because we have an individual that's got a fairly long ride home.
Yeah, that's good.
And I know he's got some information, so Zach, did, were you able to put together anything in terms of cost on this proposal?
Yeah, I actually.
I'd like to kind of get your info and then send you on your way. Not that we don't like you here, but.
I appreciate that.
Long commute.
Let's, let's get your input, yeah, so you can.
I know, I understand. Well, the spreadsheets that were presented to you, actually, they did a very good job putting it together, I know you guys did a lot of hard work on it. So, the more detailed one was put together for the salaried positions, and I basically went through the numbers just for accuracy, and if this plan went through, they are accurate. So, you were given, I believe, four or five spreadsheets that lays out what the annual implementation cost would be per year. And again, the numbers are accurate, so on the salaried side, I believe the first year would be thirty thousand dollars above where it would be if we had happened to just stick with a COLA of two percent per year. And you can see that on the bottom right-hand corner.
Okay, oh, that's what I was gonna ask, where, where are you picking that, now I'm seeing it right here, the variance.
Yeah.
Over here.
Although I believe you indicated you distributed a different one that I may have in front of me.
This is on the first one, this is the difference between fourteen to fifteen, that number there. Okay, that's the thirty-five-three one.
Correct.
On the far right-hand corner.
Yeah, so what the, what the spreadsheet is doing is comparing it, if we stuck with the model of a COLA, and it's assuming a two percent per year, or FY sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and I believe it cuts off at eighteen, and then it's taking those figures and comparing it to what this new model would be with the numbers frozen that, that would not have a COLA.
Okay.
So, again, I think they distributed something different that I may not have in front of me, I don't know if the numbers are that different from.
There are some differences, but it's actually went down.
The difference, the difference from what was submitted, originally was sixty-one thousand, and now what was submitted to us is sixteen thousand?
Correct.
So, it got reduced?
Yeah, there was, there were, there was one error in the, the police lieutenant's position. He was sent at improper salary, and I believe the health agent, we capped him at his current salary of eighty-six, eight forty-six, and previously, I think we had shown a two percent increase for him, so.
Those two positions, when they're saying maxed out, I think the better term is actually grandfathered. So, at the time of the Bennett study, to everyone's point, you can't go backwards, so the information came out that, that he was actually being paid higher than the maximum step. So, what was decided whether it was grandfathered, whether they would continue to receive their rate of pay until that position, until the individual in that position had retired, and then it would go back to where it should go. So, I also did a independent analysis of the hourly rated, which isn't in front of you, but was also part of the changes that would be presented. And based on what I seen, it actually would be a decrease in the budget overall. Some individuals would, would experience an increase, where others, it would actually be more beneficial to maintain the two percent. So, it's kind of a give and take on that end. Overall, the budget impact isn't very, very significant, some people would benefit more than others, and that's just kind of the nature of what the study would do.
Any que, any questions for Zach before he hits the.
I actually had a clarification question, if you don't mind me asking it.
Sure.
But it was brought to my attention, and I think now that I'm hearing it, it might actually be that it was a misinterpretation of the language that's following the actual Article Two, where it discusses COLA increases, but it was brought to my attention that once you quote unquote "max out", that at that point, the step eight would be up for a COLA increase, was that a wrong interpretation?
Run that, I didn't hear, Zach, the step eight would be what?
If you maxed out a step eight, then at that point, it would be eligible for a COLA, so that's kind of just one of the.
I mean, I'm not sure where that came from, Zach, but, but that's, that's not accurate. What we talked about with the five percent is more, is what we refer to.
Okay, 'cause that was, if that was true, that was drastically gonna change my analysis, which.
Yeah, we're, we're talking in fragments though, so I wanna, I wanna state it again in English, if I wanna. So, if I hear both of you, if somebody maxes out at step eight within a grade, they're not automatically going to receive a COLA adjustment, is that right? Going forward, and the only adjustment they may or may not see is over a period of time, some three to five years later, if their salary varies greater than five percent of the median, I hope, well, that was either, that was one version, then additional compensation may, that, that salary may be adjusted at that point. That there's no, once they're maxed, they're capped, until it's reviewed again.
Yeah, the, the word COLA is not in our vocabulary.
Got it.
That's how I understood it, and I think it was just an interpret, if you look at actual warrant article.
The warrant article?
If you're following the salary schedules, there is some language in there.
Okay, back there?
I think maybe, maybe the confusion is, we, we have, there's a backup article, so that if, if this, if this article that we presented in presenting to town meeting were to fail, then they have, the town meeting would have to vote on something.
Yes.
Otherwise, our employees would get zero pay.
Right, right, and that's not your intent.
And what we did, what we did was, in the, in the event, and we hope that doesn't happen, that, that this plan gets defeated, then we followed the old system and we plugged in the two percent COLA.
That is how I originally understood it, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that that's how it was.
Okay.
So, again, to, in, in the first implementation years, for budgetary impact, it wouldn't be very significant. Obviously, some of the ranges do grow a lot larger than they, than where you see people placed today. But overall, there seems to be a give and take, based on what I put together.
Yeah, I think it's the background data that would help me, I think, I think that's probably.
I, I agree, I do think some of the data that was used would be helpful to be provided, just to see, they kind of have to take it for granted that this is what it's supposed to be, you know.
But, but does this Article Two, as proposed now, ta, talk about a two percent increase to employees who have maxed out?
No.
No, no.
No.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
I think he's trying to clear up what might be considered tribal knowledge among employees.
Correct.
So, it says, "An employee on a salaried or hourly rated position whose base rate of pay effective as of June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, exceeds the maximum pay authorized for his or her position, shall continue to receive his or her current rate of pay for fiscal year two sixteen, but increased by a factor of two percent."
That's exactly how it sounds its way, yes.
That's, that's if the other part of Bill gets defeated.
Yeah, that's not the article presented.
That's the background.
That's the article, I'm just, I'm reading from the town meeting warrant.
Phyllis just informed me the town council added that, that's not part of what we presented.
Well, that's, that's in the, that's in the warrant, I'm reading the warrant.
So.
Okay, it's getting late, and usually we get less effective as time goes by. Zach, anything else?
So, that, what's in the article today, I just wanna understand this, is not part of what you wanted to implement?
Right.
And is not part of what you wanted to achieve?
It's because, my understanding is that.
No, it's not a backup.
Well, now it's on the warrant.
It's in the warrant.
It was initially intended as a backup.
That's how I understood it, I'm reading it clearly, it contradicts.
Something like the equipment wasn't done, then people would not get paid at all, if, if they.
Well, they get paid, they just would be capped where they were. They would be paid.
No.
Right, we'd always cut a check for last week's work.
Bill, the article is we're presenting it, or at least this is the first.
They'd be paid.
I think he's talking about the.
I've been on vacation, so I, I, I wasn't aware the town council would add a sentence or phrase. But it was, it was always, our understanding, that there were two ways to go. One is with the plan that we, speaking of town council. We can let him, maybe he can explain why that phrase was in there.
Well, I was just, actually was just watching that as the custodians were, you had some, it's in there because that's what Phyllis gave me, because that's been in every warrant for the last fifteen years, because you hit situations as there were with the last plan, where the plan had positions that were currently being paid more than the plan was recommending. So, those positions would just go forward giving a cost of living increase.
That wasn't.
That's been in every warrant for the last fifteen years.
But that wasn't our plan, this is a different article, Jerry, and that was not, that was not language that we.
That's what I got to put in, so.
But, but this is, this is in accordance with the memo from the personnel board of January seventeenth. What's in the warrant, it's in accordance with your memo.
I, I, I don't have the memo you're looking at, but.
Phyllis, I think, Phyllis can.
Phyllis, I'm sorry, Phyllis, yes, what would you like to say?
Just wanted to explain that it was not the personnel boards' intention to add that to the, to the proposed salary, to the proposed compensation plan. It was the personnel board's intention, and the way I interpreted it in passing it on to town council, that the COLA issue, as Warren mentioned, is a dead issue. This is an entirely new plan, so it wouldn't affect the two people, the health agent and the director of sewer operations, that historically have been given a COLA only, because back to the Bennett study of two thousand, the Bennett study concluded that the salaries that were being paid at the time in two thousand were over and above what they were recommending, and obviously, no, the intention was at least to, to, you know, continue. If, if it's in there now, it's because, Jared, my recommend, my recollection is that you said it was going to be added. I thought you were talking about that only, we've got two plans, we've got the, the compensation study that the personnel board is hoping town council will accept, and then we've got the backup, as one of the board members indicated. If you didn't have the backup, which is the traditional COLA, it's been in place, as town council said, since two thousand, we'd have to have something there, or those fifty-eight people wouldn't be paid, period, after July first. But speaking, if I may, as the personnel board member, and I was the chairperson for the two years during the Bennett study, one of the main thrusts of this compensation study is, over the years, it's been fifteen years, and the people who are classified under certain rules are not doing the same job. We have a parking clerk, that was a parking clerk when we had twenty-eight, I believe it was twenty-eight non-moving violations that the town was getting revenue, took the parking meters out, that cut that area of that job down significantly. That person now is handling the town's website, doing a number of other positions. We had three, three police lieutenants, I believe, and no deputy. Now, we have one deputy and one lieutenant. We have, as somebody pointed out on the board, the building commissioner is now, that whole area is completely computerized. The maintenance supervisor now is covering more buildings, and I believe is, is, Rick, he's, he's now inheriting, is it the armory?
The youth center, correct.
The youth center, no. So many changes, so when, when you look at the survey data, that basically it was the same, many of the towns were the same towns that were used fifteen years ago, the, those, the reason I think that Milford is as low as it is now is they had, the other towns have kept up with the changes in their job descriptions, Milford simply hasn't. The people are doing different things. The, the demands on them and the, and the level of detail that they're dealing with, that they're handling, has certainly increased, excuse me.
It's okay, take your time.
But the titles and the classifications are fifteen years old.
And, and Mr. Chairman, that's, that's a, that's a big thing, right? Getting the job classifications right, I look at that as the single biggest piece of, I'm glad you brought that up, Phyllis, is the single biggest piece of what needs to get done, that needs to be fixed. And I, I wouldn't make the assumption that the other towns have kept up with it. Their salaries are different, but they may or may not have kept up with it either.
I think one example is like Franklin, I believe has, what, ten people in their IT department?
Ten people in IT.
Right, so, so for example, when you compare, when you compare police departments, let's do that for a second, because it was a good example that Phyllis brought up. Are we comparing communities and lieutenant salaries to communities that have deputy chiefs, and therefore, some of that administrative burden and leadership requirements are, are not there? Is that, is that a one for one?
Well, some of the towns, sometimes when we were looking at, at the, the other twelve towns, sometimes maybe three or four were comparable as far as.
Organizational structure.
Personnel and construction. Sometimes there, there were more, sometimes there, there were some instances where they didn't have anybody that, that was comparable.
Did that work?
To the job description that we have, so that some of the data was, was, was not helpful at all, because there was no data.
Like town council.
Yeah, I mean, almost all the other town, we're very blessed to have.
Yeah.
The town council, who we have, almost every one of those other towns hire firms. The town council, who we have. Almost every one of those other towns hire firms or outside town councils.
Sure. Yeah, different approach.
Let me just, is Zach all set?
Yeah.
You all set with Zach? All set with Zach? Yeah, thank you. All right.
Yeah, that's the biggest part of, I think that's the fairest thing we can do for employees, if nothing else, to make sure their job descriptions match the work they do. So I think that's very important.
Well...
Sure, okay. Again, being new at this from a municipal side and not certainly having any expertise from a Personnel Board standpoint, when we talk about job descriptions that aren't matching a parking clerk anymore, isn't that, and I know that's been taken care of, but isn't that when whoever the supervisor is or something has to take on the responsibility of changing that? And then, is that where they can come before you, or does that not exist and that's what...
Go ahead, Jim, you have the...
No.
I was saying, if we're trying to fix that...
We're having the discussion anyway.
What have you done for the last 13 years? That's exactly right.
Yeah.
What we found out in doing the study was that a lot of jobs, like the parking clerk, you know, that position took on other responsibilities. It wasn't reduced to writing per se, but the person was getting at least, you know, what wasn't questioning the salary that came with it. So that was one that didn't particularly come to us. Give you an example, we had Priscilla Hogan come into us about two years ago. Because there had been a state law that put an added burden on assessors that increased her work duties, more record keeping. In addition, she was taking, became the person who was taking care of the records and the minutes at the assessors' meetings, which was, again, added time, added work responsibilities. So what we do is we ask people to come in. We have what we call a PAQ, which is a... It's a PAQ.
Of the personal assessment questionnaire? Position assessment questionnaire.
Yeah. And they, you know, in the PAQ, they give us a new job description. So we have, over the years, every one of the board members here, from the oldest me to the newest, we probably have had at least one, if not multiple, instances where, to keep things viable, the job description changes, then we make note of that, and then at the annual town meeting, the salary range will change. We've done that. But by doing the study like we do, it forced us to, not forced us, but it required everybody, the employees, Personnel Board supervisors, to take stock of what the jobs were within various departments and to update them to meet today's standards. And that's what we've done.
Okay, and then I have one more question and a comment. I guess the question is, and this might not even be able to be answered today, but are we maybe ready to get to a point where, especially with non-union personnel, we are coming up with an evaluation tool? I mean, I'm a public employee. I'm non-union. If I meet all the goals that are set for me, I can get up to 3%. If I don't, they can decide and use leverage to either give me 0, 1, or 2. I mean, doesn't that solve a lot of these problems if we actually, now this might be three years down the road, because it would take us in a whole different direction, or is that something you guys have already talked about and that wouldn't even be a possibility? That's an awesome discussion point we have.
Also the fact of our HR department.
Yeah, we don't feel that we fall under that jurisdiction, unfortunately.
Okay, no, that I understand. That's a good, I mean, that's an honest response.
I personally, I agree with that 100%. And now you're talking about pay for performance, and now you're talking about...
We've talked about that, Will. It's almost impossible to implement, because you've got different department heads who are going to have different standards in evaluating. Some people are easy graded, some people are tough graded. I mean, you know, in theory...
No, you're right.
In theory, it's wonderful. We've been talking about this since I've been on the Personnel Board. And conceptually, it's a great idea.
But most of these positions all go up to the town administrator eventually.
No, but even if...
I'm not saying that that position would evaluate all of these, but obviously, they would all have to go through there at that point. Rick, I'm not putting that on you. I'm just asking.
Didn't we have that discussion, Rick?
And Mr. Chairman, if I might, to respond to that, some department heads are easy graders, some are hard graders? That is exactly how the real world works.
That's every company.
Every company that exists out there. And so whether that's the case, you'll find from a lot of people who aren't getting graded as easier, they don't want to go work for that department head, though, but that is their option.
That may be.
So Personnel have choices as well as management in the review process. There's feedback that goes...
I think, I mean, that's something for another...
Yeah, that's a little bit beyond the scope of...
I'm just a new guy asking that.
One thing that we would love for the board to get behind or consider, we'd like to be out of business. Rather than not be a Personnel Board. We have, what's the budget now, over $90 million? We are a huge, huge corporation, and, you know, we have no...
There is no HR presence.
HR department, and there are towns, there are several, I mean, that could be a study in and of itself, but there are several towns who our consultants told us about have...
Of course.
HR departments.
Agree more.
They don't have Personnel Boards, and they administer things like, you know, the health benefits and various other things.
Evaluation system.
That would be something that, if we're going to run the town as a corporation, and if we're going to try to run it like a business, you know, as close to private sector as possible, then these are the type of things that have to be considered down the road.
All right, well, let me just kind of rein everything in, because if not, we're going to be here all night.
Mr. Chairman, I do have just one comment.
Yes, okay.
Just deal with me for a second. My only comment was, I think there's been a lot of questions and a lot of issues and a lot of confusion among the three of us. Do we really want to go to town meeting and try to explain this to all these people? Because I still don't know how to do it. So I just leave that comment there, and maybe I'm the only one that...
No, we differ amongst Personnel Board members.
Then let me segue that into, you know, going forward on this. So, okay, so we've heard the presentation from the Personnel Board, and this is your proposed Article Two, and you're looking for us for direction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation, there's some things I think, the pencil could be sharpened, there's some things that could be modified, and I think there's some things that maybe even the Personnel Board could go back into a room and have discussion about and agree philosophically on the rationale. But if there is, if there is a result of this study, job classification or job duties and job descriptions that have been updated, and the supervisors agree with those, they've signed them. I mean, that's what I mean, agree, attest to it.
Every case they've signed on.
I think we're ready for that portion of town meeting, to be brought forward to town meeting, because I don't know if we can work through...
Yeah, that's not, I understand that. That's more their operational thing. I guess the thing that we need to, that's their operational policy. The thing we need to, you know, vote on is their proposed Article Two going, oh, we don't have to vote on it. I mean, there's no legal requirement for us to...
That's true.
...take a position on it, but this board is here, they have put a considerable amount of time in on this particular article. They're asking for our direction. So what we have before us is their proposed Article Two, and whether or not there's support from this board to recommend favorable at town meeting. That's the issue before us right now.
It certainly wouldn't, you know, maybe I'm out of line, but I don't know that the board need to make that decision. Well, do we? Was this the last meeting before the town meeting? Is this your last meeting?
No, we should have another one on May 11th.
Oh, I mean, you may want to take some time to...
Well, I know, that's why I open it up to the board, but I mean, I want to keep it within the confines of the town meeting article.
But Article Two, as it's currently written, isn't in agreement.
Yeah, exactly. Not even the article is...
Well, then that's going to depend upon the motion that you present.
They're going to present the motion.
You're going to present your motion.
We would eliminate that 2%...
That sentence.
You can present your motion.
We would present it exactly as you have it, but we would eliminate that...
I understand that, but again, that's in accordance with your memo of January 17th, so, you know, I mean, we're kind of all over the place here. But in any event, the Article Two is as printed, we've heard the representation that the motion presented is going to delete the 2% collar increase. So now the question for this board is whether or not we want to make a recommendation tonight, or do we want to defer to the next meeting? You're going to meet with the Finance Committee too, correct?
We have not been invited to the Finance Committee.
We invited them and...
Is my understanding you're going Wednesday night? Am I wrong?
That's what I've heard as well.
Is my understanding you're going Wednesday night?
Phyllis, have you had an invite?
Fourth estate says you're going.
On the agenda.
It would have been nice if we were invited.
It would be nice if they, if they had us on the agenda, it would be nice if they would have let us know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we can reach out to the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
I just don't think it's ready for prime time, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to put a burden on, I don't think it's, this is ready for town meeting. We've talked a lot about the article, the confusion in the article. We've talked about, and I know how it's been represented. They've not had an opportunity to make a decision on the current article and vote on it as a board. I think they ought to. I understand the idea of the backup. That's an amendment to an article. They can have that in their pocket. Should there be any issues, they can make an amendment right on the floor. I'm not prepared to support this, and I'll tell you what I would need in order to do that. I'd need to see the position by position information. And also the analysis. I would also prefer that different communities were used. And if that means that we bring it next year... See, I would like to have, would have liked to have had input to the decision-making so that I wouldn't have these questions now. And I know you guys meet a lot. I know, you know, you can't always involve everybody. But I agree with Brian's fundamental premise, that the original selection of the communities is fundamentally flawed, skewing the data, having you go off and work with it. If you were under the understanding that the consultant was going to provide that, and he did not, or she did not, then I think it's worth redoing a portion of that. I think you've done an awful lot of work. I think a lot of it is going to be useful. So I'm not prepared to make a motion to support it.
Okay, so is that a, okay, so is that a motion to make an unfavorable recommendation on Article Two?
As it is now, yes. I just don't think it's ready.
Is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Not?
I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah?
Yeah, I just, again, this might take us years down the road, but we have the Personnel Board telling us that we should have an HR department, excuse me.
We should eliminate the Personnel Board.
I mean, this is a group of people individually that I actually, obviously, I think we all do have a lot of respect for, and they did a ton of work, but Warren's saying that, I mean, so I do think we have to not... We can't support this article. We have to keep the status quo, and then I think we have work to do to move in a different direction.
Any further discussion? motions were made and seconded to recommend unfavorable for Article Two as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, folks. I think you do, I think the next step is the Finance Committee. You can go forward from there. Yeah, Phyllis.
Can I address the issue of merit increases in studying the different positions? Not all of them generate up to the town administrator, so there is...
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
I think just one example, in every section of Article Two, in the salaries section, there's the health agent. In the hourly rated section, there are the health inspectors. In the hourly non-rated, there's everybody from a school nurse to the transfer station attendants. And that's spread all over. That's what makes Article Two so difficult. There isn't any one department...
No, they're all the fiefdoms.
...person that you know for better or for worse, you're going to get a consistently applied criteria. It's not going to happen.
Well, that's a valid point. Thank you.
Phyllis, thank you very much. Thank you, folks, for everything.
Thank you.
All right, we thank you for your time. We'll either present to town meeting or...
It's just another step in the process. I mean, it's not, you know, the end all. I mean, it's just another step in the process, so, I mean, I think you've gotten some feedback and, you know, I would think, take it from there and tweak and fine tune, I think, where some of the rough spots were.
And you're absolutely right, and that's what we've been doing for the better part of the year. So if it came out a little bit rough in spots, or if my esteemed colleague and I may differ slightly over some of it, it's because it's still evolving.
Sure.
And so, you know, take into account what the board has said. My understanding, we have a town meeting in October.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Where most of the budget issues are considered. So I can't say what the board's going to do, but we certainly will heed, you know, what you gentlemen have said tonight, and we would prefer to have your support. So if it means sharpening our presentation and our facts, I know this board, I know all of you personally, if we can convince you at another date and another time, then that hopefully will happen.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
All right, that concludes the public hearings, the town administrators' report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Governor's Office has informed the town that the Chapter 90 local transportation aid funding for fiscal year 2016 will total 200 million statewide. We did receive a letter certifying that the town of Milford's Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal year 2016 is $821,211. This apportionment will automatically be incorporated into our existing 10-year Chapter 90 contract. It's an increase of about $3,900 over last year's amount. I'm happy to report that the installation of the sound system in Upper Town Hall was completed last week. Ad Tech Systems provided instructions on the setup of the system, as well as its operation, and members of our IT staff, as well as our maintenance staff. And they will be also coming back to help us set up the hearing assistance matters for us.
How's it sound, Rick?
Very nice, very nice.
You haven't tried it with a fully loaded room yet, and that's the real test, right?
Not yet, no.
But it sounds good.
It was used actually the other, on the weekend for the concert. They had a microphone set up just for speaking. And if you can believe my mother, she said it was very well.
Good, good, good.
We did receive notice on disaster declaration for the blizzard. Commonwealth of Massachusetts received a major disaster declaration, making federal funding available under FEMA's Public Assistance Program as a direct result of the January 26 through 28, 2015 blizzard. Public assistance will be made available to local governments for emergency work and permit repair and placement of facilities damaged as a result of this blizzard. MEMA will be, in fact, conducting applicant briefings to help explain the reimbursement process for receiving federal funds for eligible expenses incurred as a result of this severe storm. Fire Chief Tui and Finance Director Taylor will be attending this briefing most likely next week. Regarding the senior center, the Finance Committee did grant a request for an emergency transfer in the amount of $9,900 for the patio repairs at the senior center. Also, I am informed by Maintenance Supervisor Carlos Benjamin that he has repaired the gutters that were contributing to the problem we had with the patio, so we hope to get this work done quickly. I am informed by the Police Chief Olafland that the Police Department will receive approximately an additional $100,000 in funds as a result of the investigative efforts of Lieutenant James Falvey and the detectives of the department in helping to secure convictions in the Waters Company case. If you recall, in March of 2014, the department received approximately $324,000 under the federal forfeiture law as a result of this case. As you also know, these funds cannot be used for regular operating funds, but have been used and will be used to purchase things such as a police vehicle, replace and upgrade tasers, and for much-needed equipment. And finally, I just want to thank everyone who participated in the cleanup day this past Saturday. It was great to see the cooperation of many people working together to benefit our town. Also, thank you to the citizens of Milford for setting up this event. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick, and, yeah, regarding the citizens of Milford cleanup, it was a great event, and Rick and I actually cleaned up Water Street, which still looks good. I'll have you know, it came out... and I'll have you know, it, it came out well. So, what I'd ask, could you invite John Seaver and Steve Tredle and whoever else would like to come to our next meeting, so that we can give them a proper thank you for the work that they did? It's not easy to coordinate that kind of an effort, you know, when I got there in the morning, everything was, you know, very professional, very organized, people who obviously, you know, had not checked in, just showed up, and, you know, they were sent off with, you know, proper equipment and a location to go, so, I mean, after we got sent off to Water Street, I, I don't know what happened at the operation, but I'm sure it continued very well, so I'd like to get them here and thank them from the board for the work that they did, and would that be the March eleventh meeting?
May eleventh, right.
I'm sorry, May eleventh, I'm going back in time, going back in time. Bill? Any comments, questions?
No, no questions.
Okay.
Thank you for your report, Rick.
Well, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there, I'm glad that you and Rick were both there, that's, that's a good thing, I heard lots of nice things about that.
Okay, great, so, moving on to old business, we have a license application for Fun Zone of Milford, apparently, that bull is coming back, and is going to be marching on June fifth, 2015. So, Rick, was there a scheduling miscue, or?
Yeah.
Confusion with his calendar?
Yeah, he called me the next day and informed me that he actually needs a one-day automatic amusement license for June fifth for the Douglas High School after-graduation party. Again, all the paperwork is and was in order, and he apologizes, but I told him we could make that correction at this meeting.
And is this in place of the date that we gave him last time?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
I'll move to, to grant, I'll make a motion to grant automatic amusement for June fifth for a mechanical bull for the Douglas after-graduation for PINS or Fun Zone Milford LLC.
Second.
Second, a motion made and seconded, any more discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that is unanimous. I see we have a letter of intent regarding the Consigly TIF.
Yes, if I may, just quickly, Consigly has agreed to the, I think we called it the Revised Three Proposal for the Tax Increment Financing Agreement, that was, again, voted on at the April sixteenth meeting by this board, we need now to go forward, three separate votes, one would be to, and I listed them on my summary, to make, one would be to schedule a special town meeting to be held on Monday, May eighteenth, 2015, we would incorporate this as part of our annual town meeting, and the second would be vote to recommend the town meeting approve a proposed fifteen-year tax increment financing agreement pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-nine, between Consigly Construction Company, Inc. and the Granite Building Realty LLC in the Town of Milford, for the proposed property and authorization, and authorize the submission of the same to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, and the third vote would be to recommend the town meeting approve the acceptance of the proposed certified project application by Consigly Construction Company, Inc. and Granite Building LLC, and authorize the submission of the same for approval to the EACC.
Okay, so we have the proposed special town meeting warrant.
That was.
From May eighteenth, 2015, is there a motion?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
There's another article on this, too.
There is a second article.
Just to, just for clarity.
Yeah, the nuts and bolts.
This is totally unrelated, to transfer the CDBG money from prior articles to a current article to allow a current application to go forward.
Right.
So, so, just, I don't have any issue, obviously, we voted for Revised Three, I was under the impression, though, that we would come back with a document prior to town meeting that would have the nuts and bolts in terms of number of hires, employees, all of what, what is ultimately going to be committed to, to the state, right? We normally have that agreement and that document in front of us.
The proposed TIF agreement.
Yes, I will have that next week to be, to be reviewed by Town Council in this board.
Okay.
So I'm good.
Lynn is sitting there in the back, and we have had conversation, we will have that, absolutely.
Nothing tricky about it, all of this is what was represented?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that, yep.
Okay, good, so, let me see if I can do this.
Do you have the votes, Bill?
I got it right here.
All right, so, let me start off, Mr. Chairman, I'd write, I'd like to make a motion to vote to schedule a special town meeting to be held on Monday, May eighteenth, 2015.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous.
Next motion is like to vote to recommend that the town meeting approve proposed fifteen-year tax incremental financing agreement pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-nine, between Consigly Construction, Inc. and Granite Building Realty LLC in the Town of Milford for the proposed property and authorization of submission, the same Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, the EACC.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, unanimous.
And last, I'd like to make a motion to vote to recommend that the town meeting approve the acceptance of the proposed certified project application by Consigly Construction and Granite Building LLC and authorize the submission for the same approval to the EACC.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that too is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of courtesy, we voted on all the other selectmen articles, I'd like to make a motion that we also approve the second article in the special town meeting that aggregates all the dollars from the Community Development Block grant, I don't want to leave that one out.
Sure.
So I'd vote to support that article as well.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, for a favorable recommendation on Article Two of the special town meeting, any further discussion, not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. Okay, so, at the next meeting, we'll have a proposed TIF agreement for the board to review, and then we can go forward on the May eighteenth town meeting, so this.
We should be able to put a signed copy in front of every town meeting.
Absolutely, yep.
This, this will be a meeting within the meeting, we'll.
Correct.
We'll open the annual town meeting, adjourn it, go into the special town meeting, complete that, and then go back to the annual town meeting. Okay, so, that's fine, the next item that we have on the agenda is the annual town meeting artic, the annual town meeting warrant, and I think that this is just kind of a final opportunity for us, and, and we probably addressed, I think, the things that were hanging out there, the Grodfrey Brook and the Personnel Board, but this is an opportunity to just go through any articles that we have not already discussed, to see if we want to take a vote, or if we want more information, or if we're all set to go. So let me turn it over to committee bills or anything?
Nothing more to add, Mr. Chairman.
I think that we hit them all off.
Absolutely.
Okay, so typically, as Bill knows, the chairman assigns the articles for town meeting.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, from both of you, because there are a lot of articles, if you could just kind of email to Rick some that you.
Any preference.
Would like, if you had any preference on, and we'll, we'll work it that way, okay? So if you can just get that into Rick.
Okay, will do.
What articles you feel you might want to present. Okay, so, we're all set on that, Bill, do you have any old business?
No old business, Mr. Chairman.
Well, do you have any old business?
No, thank you.
Moving on to new business, we have correspondence from Peg Knowlton requesting permission for the Greenleaf Garden Club to hold its annual plant sale at Louisa Lake on May sixteenth, 2015, from eight AM until noon, the proceeds go to their ongoing projects. Motion made and seconded, any discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, we have application from American Legion Auxiliary to distribute poppies the Memorial Day weekend, May twenty-second to the May twenty-fifth, nine AM to six PM.
I'll move.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, we have a permit to obstruct application from the Milford Lions Club, conduct, they would like to conduct a toll road in Milford on May ninth, 2015, from nine AM to two PM, requesting permission to set up two location points at the intersection of Route sixteen and Route one oh nine, and also in front of the post office at Two Congress Street, as far as the Police Chief has signed off on this application.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, we have an application for one-day license for Saint Mary of the Assumption Parish for May ninth, 2015, five PM to midnight, for the parish hall, to have a family and community dinner with music.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, unanimous, we received correspondent from Sue Clark, the Senior Center Director, regarding bids for the Senior Center Fitness Room Project, it was advertised in the Central Register and the Daily News on March eighteenth, 2015, with a pre-bid meeting on April sixth, 2015, at seven thirty AM, seven contractors attended the meeting and three returned proposals, bids were opened on April fifteenth at the town hall, proposals ranged from $70,784 to $85,425, the low bid was submitted by A One Building Company located in Milford, references checked, came back favorable, the proposals were reviewed by the town engineer, town administrator, and the senior center director, and she's recommending the contract be awarded to the low bidder, A One Building Company.
Mr. Chairman, the only question I had here, and maybe Rick can help us, are we approving the base bid at $70,784, or the total bid with the alternate?
On that, we were looking to, for the base bid, we're not going to award the first alternate.
Okay.
So it would be the $70,784, correct?
I just wanted to be, be clear on that, it's the second page, okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lowest bidder, A One Building Company of Milford, Mass, for a base bid of $70,784,000 for the work at the Senior Center.
I'll second it, but, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
In the future, can, is it possible that we get an address, I just had never heard of them, so I even Googled them, and I just couldn't find any record of them.
Yeah, it's actually, if you go on the Secretary of State, it's A One Building, I think it's an LLC.
Oh, okay, yeah, I just, I caught that, it was weird, and I was, you know, didn't hear from them, okay.
We can do that, absolutely, yep. They are a viable corporation, or LLC reference.
Yeah, well, I think, okay, I think Will was just talking about the principal place of business.
Yeah, that's it, we do have that, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely, yep.
All right, motion made and seconded, any further discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous.
We didn't talk about a waiver of fees.
Correct, that would be the second thing we'd be looking for.
All right, so I'd make a motion that we waive the associated permit fees?
Yep.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded.
That was my mistake.
Well, no, I'm glad you brought that up, any more discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. We have a permit to obstruct application from the Military Peer Support Program to obstruct a public way for a five-kilometer road race and walk, Sunday, June fourteenth, 2014, starting at eight forty-five AM, the end time, no later than ten thirty AM, the map is attached, and the Police Chief has signed off on this.
Move?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, we also have an application from Julie Gonzalez for an appointment on the Commission on Disability, is there a motion?
Be happy to make a motion for Julie Gonzalez to be appointed to the Commission on Disability.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion, if not, all those in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, we received an add-on, a gift from Mr. Ronald Jenks, this is to the Fight Department, wasn't it?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous, Bill, do you have any new business?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Will, do you have any new business?
Yes, I, I think it's more for a question for Rick, Rick, Edward Ross applied to the Talent Bank for the Conservation Commission, Vani Reese's office called him, he came and met with Vani and all the members of the Conservation Commission, and she and the board thought that he would be coming before this meeting.
Okay.
He's actually very excited, I've known him since kindergarten, he's a small business owner in Milford, and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint him to the Conservation Commission.
Can we have it?
I don't have it in front of me tonight, I.
Oh, can we wait, can we wait till May eleventh?
She contacted him.
It can, but he was contacted, so I just.
He was contacted what to?
To come down, meet everybody.
In response to the Talent Bank?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
He called up very excited, saying, geez, I'm going to be, they told me I was being on the agenda for the twenty.
I'd be happy to second.
When's the next meeting?
Our meeting?
No, Conservation Commission?
I don't.
Third, well, third Thursday in May?
I think that's it, don't hold me to that, so that would be the twenty-first, maybe, on the list?
Twenty-first?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so we can do it the next meeting, there's not going to be a meeting in the meantime, right?
Again, I don't know.
As long as they don't need time, as long as they don't.
Well, I'm going to keep my motion, because I think you should, I mean, that's what he was told, and.
Well, I, I don't doubt, I mean, I don't have anything in front of me, one way or the other, and, you know, I mean, not to, I mean, I just don't have anything in front of me to act on, and so, I mean, I would prefer to, you know, have the paperwork on it, and if we're going to be meeting on the eleventh, and the Concom's not meeting in the meantime, I don't know that there's any prejudice to them.
No, I just, as I look at these sheets, not seeing them in the past, that, I mean, there's really not a lot of information on there, so, I think we're pretty much voting on the fact that someone from Milford wants to be on a committee, and.
I know, but it's, but it's, it's nice to have the, the thing to act on, but, do you have the application, Rick, do you have the paperwork, have we got any yet, or?
I don't.
I know we submitted it, because Vani called them in response to that, so.
We have to check, I don't.
Okay, all right, all right, yeah, I, I would prefer that we wait till the next meeting.
You can definitely pull it out.
I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm fine with that, wait until the next meeting.
Okay, okay, I'll pull it out.
Yeah, please do, I just, you saying it's the first you heard of it, makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, me too, and, and the, actually, the reason, the reason.
Vani did a really good thing.
As long as we're not, yeah, as long as we're not inhibiting the board from potentially meeting, because what I've heard consistently from chairs is that, you know, with vacation schedules, sickness being what it is, and other family commitments, sometimes it's difficult to get a quorum, that we're not going to impact that meeting, so I'm happy to wait.
Okay, I'll pull it out.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion.
That's what I wanted to see, I, I don't think anyone's going to prejudice by it, we'll just get it and go through the, the, the proper procedure on that.
Sure, okay, I'll put it on for the.
All right, so we'll put that on for the next meeting, get the paperwork on that. Is there any other new business?
No.
Okay, all right, we have correspondence, and this is from the Town Administrator, this was a request that I had made to the Finance Department to reach out to local lending institutions that are going to stay on Main Street in lieu of Milford National deciding to close their Main Street branch, considering the fact that the Town of Milford deposits large sums of money with them, while they're making a business decision to leave Main Street, I think a policy decision from this board to try to reinforce Main Street whenever we can, would go hand in hand with a decision to relocate town funds to a bank that stays committed to, to Main Street, so, we did get correspondence from representatives of the Milford Federal Savings and Loan Association indicating what services they would provide, and also that the town does have a $500,000 certificate of deposit coming due soon, and the rate is favorable for that, as well as Rockland Trust, which does have a great deal of municipal experience, and does have some references from other towns that do business. If it were up to me, I would relocate the town funds to, to a bank that stays committed to Main Street, but it's not up to me, that decision is up to this board to decide, I certainly understand the feelings of both of my colleagues, I'm not looking to create a divisive situation in any way, shape, or form, I'm not looking to put anybody on the spot, or even to grandstand about it, so, I'm not going to ask this board to go forward in terms of any relocation of funds, however, what, what I am going to ask both of you to consider, as I looked at this situation with Milford National, there is a piece of land that Milford National does own, which is behind the Police Department, and is essentially a vacant lot of land, I asked Rick to pull the field card on it, and it's not directly behind the Police Department, there's a house behind the, the parking lot, and then this lot is, is beyond that, it's .142 acres, you can see the plan, it's outlined as. It's outlined as parcels number 269 and 270 on the assessors' map. I think that that land would be very valuable to the police department, and if the residence in between were to ever become available, it would be very, very valuable for the police department in terms of storage of vehicles, parking whatsoever. So, I would like to ask the Milford National if they would be willing to donate this small portion of land to the town for the police department to use as additional parking. I certainly don't think it would prejudice the new use. As you look at the photo of Milford National, their existing parking lot on the parcel is quite large and really has never been used, and regardless of what business is going to go in there, there's certainly more than enough parking that would be able to accommodate that business. But, you know, for a bank that does profess to be a community bank and does have success and has made the decision to move on, you know, I think it makes sense to ask them whether or not they'd be willing to donate that piece of land to the town. So, that's what I'll put forth for your consideration.